Good evening and welcome to the Merrill Harry Public Schools Board of Education Meeting. MAX respects the role our likely board members serve in the function of our board meetings. Board members and administrators are committed to working collaboratively to provide our students a safe learning environment and the highest level of achievement. This meeting is a formal event and professional conduct is the expectation for all in attendance. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Sample. First on the agenda is our public comments to the board. General subject matter. The note and a reminder that the board allows scheduled fifteen minutes at the beginning of each regular meeting for members of the public to speak. Speakers will be allocated three minutes to address the board. If you have a large group of one topic, please designate a representative to speak. Board members may ask clarifying questions during the comment section but postpone further discussion and/or action until further public input. We appreciate your participation in the school board meeting this evening. The public comment period is an important time for the board to hear the concerns of its constituents. Nevertheless, prior to making a statement during the public comment period, you may wish to consider whether the content of your speech could be harmful to an individual person and if so, whether that person could have a legal claim against you related to the statement you make this evening. We have been advised that the Wisconsin Supreme Court has specifically ruled that there is no absolute privilege which protects defamatory comments by speakers at board meetings such as this. Therefore, please be aware that each speaker bears a personal risk if anything he or she says during the public comment period of this school board meeting is defamatory, slanderous, or otherwise harmful to another individual. Thank you. Without further ado, I would like to call up to the microphone at the table while Lisa Haas.
Good evening. I'd like to speak to you tonight about policies three one one two slash four one one two titled Board Staff Communications. The idea of a chain of command is nothing new. I've been a part of this district for twenty-three years. And as long as I can remember, there's always been an expectation that most questions, concerns, issues, and so forth should be addressed to an immediate supervisor. I have been very fortunate in my years here at MAX to have had many great building principals, including my current administrator, who have supported me day in and day out with anything I've needed. At a district level, I often ask questions and seek clarifications like these when needed. In fact, just last week, I was working with Dr. Sample to establish a set time for staff to be able to meet and confer with him on issues affecting students, staff, parents, and the community. I truly believe good communication is at the heart of a well-run organization. However, I strongly believe this policy limits effective communication between staff and the board. In fact, it has been explained that this policy will discourage communication with the board about specific matters involving employment. Staff care about every aspect of our profession as it affects us, our students, and families. We are dedicated to MAX. On occasion, administration and staff may view an issue through very different lenses due to their perspective within the organization. This policy does not build a positive culture when staff feel as if their voice does not matter. In a time when we all must be collaborative to help all students achieve excellence, all voices matter and should be heard equally. I believe it is important to consider all perspectives before decisions are made. However, if staff are no longer allowed to share their viewpoints with the school board without fear of being disciplined, the whole picture may not be seen. It has been said that this policy addresses employee having risky conversations with board members and allows administration to address both staff members. Yet our district believes in failing forward, having deep conversations, and problem-solving together. It's a team effort. And excluding opportunities for all stakeholders to collaborate would contradict our common goal. Also, does this new policy mean that staff are no longer able to give public comments at school board meetings as I am doing right now? Would I be disciplined for making such a public statement? How does that also correlate with my rights as a citizen of Merrill, a taxpayer, a voter? How about the rights of many staff members who are also parents? Do they lose their rights to express themselves as well? The first reading of this policy has already been waived by a committee. Before you quickly approve it as a second reading, please consider all the implications that it brings. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Haas. Any board members have clarifying questions from the public comment? Thank you. Next public comment this evening is by Steve Osos. Steve, if you could step up to the microphone, please.
Good evening, board. I guess I would have much better places to be since it is budget time for the city. But it is regards to policy number three one one two and four one one two. My country tonight, I see multiple issues with this policy. My first biggest issue is under the First Amendment right, freedom of speech. The First Amendment guarantees freedom concerning religion, expression in assembly, and the right to petition. It also guarantees freedom of expression by prohibiting Congress from restricting the press or rights of an individual to speak freely. It also guarantees the right for the citizens to assemble peacefully and petition to their government. The origin of freedom of speech, many of you do not know, the struggles for the free speech of England well-known to informed Americans, occasion of which members of the British Parliament were prosecuted, led to conclusions in the British Bill of Rights sixteen eighty-nine, of guarantees of free speech in legislation session. The Speech or Bail Clause of Article One, Section Six in the American Constitution follows that model. In seventeen ninety-eight, Congress enacted the Alien Sedation Act, which punished those who criticized the President and the Government of the United States. These laws were widely attacked in impeding on free speech, and they were repealed in eighteen oh one before any test of the Supreme Court. Not until nineteen sixty-four did the Supreme Court plainly and unbegusly say that the Sedation Act of seventeen ninety-eight violated the First Amendment. The second issue that I have with this is I'm a taxpaying citizen. I vote for you board members to represent me. So this policy is taking away my voting powers, correct? I cannot speak to you about my concerns about the district, policy, and procedures and monies going forward, because to me, it certainly seems like it is. Therefore, my voice should be heard like every other citizen in the city. I certainly hope that these board members here today vote down this policy so every voice can be heard without fear of discipline. Remember, the board takes an oath to uphold the Constitution, and it is my belief you are taking away my First Amendment right. The second issue is I'm married to a board member. I violate that right every day, every day. So you're taking that away from me? I need to go home and bed like you do, Mr. Sample or Dr. Sample. I need a bed. I sit on the board. I go home and bed too. Also, remember, I get some of my best information, as I sit on city council, is talking to the workers. They give me information that saves our taxpayers thousands of dollars, and I follow up with that. Just be careful what you're voting on here. You have a policy in place, and I believe you'll do the right thing, but we don't need Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Osos. Do we have any questions for Mr. Osos or clarifying points? Thank you. Next on our agenda this evening, not having any other over comment sheets that I'm missing, we would go into board recognition. The board this evening would like to recognize Olivia Dackel and the introduction to business students in the organization of the Merrill Riverbend Trails' ten-year anniversary celebration. Please help us recognizing the following individuals. Elizabeth Schmidt, DECA president, Kellen Higner, DECA vice president, Kaden Schwann, DECA reporter Allison Hook, Anna Schlegel, Kara Boyd, Jenna Jacobson, Chase Corruth, Jack Hook, many of which has helped on radio ads and other components to that celebration, and the rest of the introduction to business students. That event included live music, a candlelight walk along the trail, raffle prizes, campfire, and free food and drinks. So tonight, the board would like to recognize you guys. If anyone is here, please join me on stage. This is Dr. Anybody like to say anything about their experience and share with the crowd?
Okay, Dr. Likely to say if you would, I'm just grateful for the opportunity to be a part of the event. You really gave us really a lot of hands-on experience, so I would have to give that.
I'd like to support our community and go into the works to sell my fire button.
I'd like to thank Ms. Dackel for having us have this opportunity.
Again, I'd like to thank the board, Mr. Murray, who supplied our nomination and the opportunity to work with the community, and most of all, I'd like to thank my most amazing students and my most amazing president, Elizabeth, for all their support and help. Good luck.
Next on our agenda, I'd ask that our student board of education representatives, Amelia Scovera and Isaiah Ralston, come up to the microphones and share some insight of what's been happening at Merrill High School.
Hi, okay, so on October twenty-first last week, the high school had a great speaker come for the first time in two years, which was very, very fun. The speaker's name was Brad Hurtig, and he came to talk for about an hour about the importance of overcoming obstacles and making a way. He had a prosthetic arm on both arms, and he really talked about how even where it doesn't seem there's a way, there was a way, and it was very inspirational for many of the students. And he was originally scheduled for last year when we couldn't have him come, but we were very glad he could come this year. Also, today, the students got to have a little fun before the long weekend with Fall Fest. Now, Fall Fest is new, and it is the first event that the student council had put on in an effort to get more kids involved and excited about school. Today, the school scheduled them to mount highs that each normal class was about thirty-five minutes, and flex and advisory those during seven periods were sixty minutes. During those times, students could sign up for any type of activity that teachers hosted. Popular choices were spooky movies like Focus Focus, cookie decorating, or caramel apple making. Along with the fun activities, DECA held dress-up days yesterday and today. Yesterday, students dressed up in their future career attire, and today, contests were held on who the best Halloween costume was, and whether that be on creativity or the best group costume. The prize for that was a donut. And even the teachers got into the spirit, especially many of the teachers of the history pod, who dressed up as students, and they were very spot on. I don't know if the post was on Facebook, but they were very good. And everyone enjoyed the time to relax and have fun. Also, the first quarter is coming to an end this upcoming Monday. It's been very successful, many new opportunities for students to participate in, and everyone has had a great time adjusting, and we look forward to another great second quarter.
So, parent-teacher conferences have been going on recently. This is a great opportunity for parents to talk with the teachers about their kids and receive valuable feedback about how their kids are doing in school and what they need to improve. As has been in past years, parent-teacher conferences have been very successful again this year. Students have been thrilled about some of the opportunities that are available this year that weren't available last year due to COVID. Last year, homecoming ended, be canceled due to coronavirus, so students were as appreciative as ever that it was able to happen this year. There were dress-up days, skits, games, a dance, and of course, the homecoming football game. The Blue Jays were able to pull off an upset this year and defeat the Lakeland Thunderbirds in a close game by the score of fourteen to twelve. Students were very excited for the opportunity to take part in homecoming festivities this year. Students are also glad to be able to take part in more clubs this year. Clubs happened last year, but they were very limited due to COVID. This year, with clubs back in full swing, students are able to take advantage of a wide variety of extracurricular activities that may have been lifted last year. Fall sports are just ending. Student athletes are proud of how their season went this year, with many Merrill teams having successful years. A member of the cross-country team, Lish Schmidt, even has the opportunity to run in the upcoming state team. Also, the volleyball team made the playoffs, and Amelia Scovera and Tessa Wheat made sectionals for tennis. With fall sports ending, that means that winter sports are approaching. Sports such as basketball and wrestling will be starting their practices and games very soon.
All right, thank you, guys. Board members, anyone have any comments or questions to Amelia and Isaiah's reports this evening? All right, thank you, guys. Very detailed, much appreciated. At this point on our agenda, I'll turn it over to Dr. Sample with administrative reports. Just a reminder that board members have asked any questions that they wanted already, but have the opportunity to continue to ask questions and make comments during this time as they see fit. At this time, I will turn it over to Dr. Sample for the administrative reports. Thanks, Kevin. Though you will see the, although you will find the administrative reports as provided to you last week. Does anybody have any questions or comments on any of those reports prior to my superintendent's report? Maria has a question, Dr. Sample. Go ahead, Maria.
Just a quick follow-up question from a couple months ago with regard to summer school and safety and the children being picked up at the elementary level. I know that we had talked about it, that there were some concerns with three thousand two Kate being open, the doors being open, and also folks that were able to pick up children without the name tag in the vehicle, and I just wanted to make sure that that had been addressed for next year's summer school.
Go ahead, Heather.
And I know that we don't have all the same personnel that was in place for summer school, so I recognize that.
Sure, so I can let you know what we're doing and putting in place this year, and I believe Mr. Schultz will be the person in charge of summer school for next year, and so he'll know all this process. We are able to flag in Skyward now if there is something in place that we need to be notified of in terms of parent pickup, somebody can't pick up, those kinds of things. Other things that we are doing are we are asking them if they don't have their tag to park and come in, and we check their IDs, and they have to be issued a tag from us. Now, as the year goes on, Matt or I start to recognize specific parents, and so it happens like, hey, I went and bought a new car, I don't have my ID. But they have to check with Matt or I, and we have to know who that parent is. A staff member is not allowed to do that. So those are some of the things that we are putting in place to make sure that those situations don't arise again.
Heather, will that be in place for summer school as well, similar?
Yes, Mr. Schultz is aware of the same procedures, and so I don't see why he wouldn't follow the same parameters.
Right, and I'm sorry, it just seemed to be a disconnect. I know that Kate, generally speaking, during the year followed all those procedures, but something seemed to fall off during summer school.
Okay, I make a note to Mr. Schultz to follow the same procedures for the summer program.
Perfect, perfect. That was my own concern. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Any other questions about any other administrative report?
Brett, go ahead. Eddie, can you, how do you miss a hundred and ten thousand dollars, boys? From Tower.
So we have gotten to the end of the year, straight close of our books and things, and I shared with the fifty sure finance as well that we had quite a significant amount of money left over in Fund Fifty. I bring shout to the gentleman who we work with, his first name is Bruce, his last name is escaping me right now. Either way, had a quick conversation with him today, trying to make sure we have all of our bills or invoices. I gave it over there, we did, and later I got a big call from Merrill accounts receivable, from our actual accounts, and said, hey, you never paid for April. So that is where it came from. It was just simply a invoice that probably got, it used to be on an email that would go out to like Brian, and I obviously didn't get it. It was in his account, and it got missed.
Sounds like it's more on there and then a little shuffle on ours than it did.
No, yeah, it's, we already paid it up, and it made an adjustment on our financials for last year. If you look at the Treasury's report, my favorite color it's in, teal or purple, whatever, that is just showing the difference in the change there, so we can pay that extra bill because the order, since it happened in April, it has to go on my Treasury's books.
All right, thank you.
So, yep.
Any other questions? With my superintendent's report, you can see the monthly activities and meetings. I provided a Maple Grove update that we, I'm hopeful that we can have, that we will have. Actually, at the time that I was writing this, I was hopeful that we will have, and we will have information to discuss in the close session. The referendum survey timeline, the referendum survey has obviously gone up to our staff as well as our community. I provided the referendum timeline there so that you can see that we are on schedule, that it was scheduled to close, I believe, next week, the survey. We've had a good response rate so far, and just today, I received notification from School Perceptions that they sent a prompt to survey takers to increase our numbers even more. The administrative team has been working in the event of a failed referendum, first of all, in the event of a referendum, and then secondly, if we do go to a referendum and the referendum fails, we've been working on potential budget cuts so we can stay ahead of that curve. We have our late start Wednesday. The first one was Wednesday, October sixth, and so we sent out a reminder, or I'm sorry, a survey to gauge the effectiveness of that, since that was our first event. Everything went very well for our first Wednesday. Right now, we're just working on ironing out some of the edges on supervision, and the staff benefits that time so that they collaborate together. I believe I shared with you in an email the Merrill Harry Chamber of Commerce recognition as Large Business of the Year award. Still engaging in personal rounding is my goal to round with some new employees and all administrators. Four times throughout the year, you can see the personnel that I rounded with, my colleagues and administrators. Also, this is the time of year to have the goal-setting conferences, and so there's my progress as of last week for scheduling administrative evaluation. The goal-setting conference that starts the evaluation plan for the year. I've included my building visibility, the alt meeting, agenda and notes, central office, administrator meeting agendas, and the weekly bulletins that are sent out each and every Friday. Any questions are all regarding my report. Mr. Smith, go ahead.
In regards to the third Friday enrollment, I see we're down a hundred and six students. Is that reflected in our, I guess, do we anticipate that drop for our budget? Has that been looked at, whether we're, so a hundred and six in line with what our anticipation was last year for this year, or are we anticipating a budget shortfall?
The budget with the positions that we have not been able to fill, et cetera, we got around about fifty, so this is twice the number that we had anticipated and that we had originally budgeted for. Eddie can answer the rest as far as making those adjustments. I saw an article, I was a little disappointed, obviously very disappointed, that we had such a high number, and then statewide, in public schools, there were forty thousand students that are no longer in public schools, so we're certainly not alone, but it was something that we did not anticipate to this moment.
Just real quick, sort of having a discussion with the curriculum worksheet, we budget for more students because we're applying enrollment districts, so in the short run, the less students we get, the more money we get because of that, and both the final enrollment exemption, hold harmless, which I think was five sixty last year to eight forty this year, or eight sixty. So there's about three hundred thousand dollar increase actually, so we're covered, and we did our projection, we budgeted high and keep the numbers.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thanks, Sean. Any other questions? Thank you, Kevin. All right, thank you, Dr. Sample. Next on our agenda, we'll go to committee reports. We'll start with the Policy Committee. We have the attached draft minutes from September twenty-ninth committee meeting. I'm number two as chair, and other members of the Policy Committee are available for questions. Do we have any questions for the Policy Committee this evening? Hearing done. Next on our agenda is the Facilities Committee, attached with the draft minutes from the October sixth committee meeting. Myself as the chair, and other members of the Facilities Committee are available for questions. Do we have any questions for the Facilities Committee this evening? Hearing done. Next committee is the Finance Human Resources Committee, with we have the attached draft minutes from our October sixth meeting. John Smith as chair and other members of the Finance HR Committee are available for questions. Do we have any questions for our Finance Human Resources Committee this evening? Do we have any questions for our finance human resources committee this evening? Hearing none. Our next committee on the agenda is curriculum technology human services committee or CTP. Attached draft minutes from the October thirteenth committee meeting. chaired by Linda Yingling, attended by myself and Kendra are available for questions. Do we have any questions for the CTP committee at this meeting tonight? Hearing none, we will move on on our agenda. We do not have anything under the heading of unfinished business. So we will move into board of education business. The first item on there is the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two revised budgets and levy certification with the topic summary sheet provided by Edward then. If they recommended motion, do we have a motion this evening? Mr. Smith?
All motion to approve the revised tax levy of nine million nine hundred and sixty thousand four hundred and seventeen dollars for Fund Ten, five hundred and forty six thousand six hundred and three dollars for Fund Thirty Eight, and one hundred and sixty six thousand for Fund Eighty for a grand total of ten million six hundred and seventy three thousand twenty dollars. Revised twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two fiscal year budget and the corresponding sixty five ninety budget adoption form for publication in the photo news and the revised Treasurers report from fiscal year twenty twenty one.
Motion by Mr. Smith, do we have a second? Second by Maria Volpe. Any questions or discussion on this motion or this topic this evening? Hearing none, all those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously on a voice vote. Next item on our agenda this evening is approval of Head Start annual report. Tricia Deardt provided the board with the annual report to review. And we do have a recommended motion, do we have a motion this evening? Nubs?
I recommend the motion to approve the Head Start annual report as presented before.
Motion by Nubs, we have a second by Kendra. Any discussion or questions on the motion or this topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Do we have any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously on a voice vote. Next item on our agenda this evening is Head Start training for the Board of Education. Being that the Board of Education is the governing body of the Head Start program, where members receive training that is specific to their roles as the governing body. Members and members need to be able to articulate all the training, self to make decisions about the Head Start program. Additional training throughout the year is done through Board of Education reports or special agenda items. And there was attachments guiding us through that process. At this time, Mrs. Deardt is available for any questions that board members have of that process. Do we have any questions for either Dr. Sample or Mrs. Deardt on that process? All right, thank you for that information and guidance. And I believe as we complete that, Tricia via Tammy has provided us with a form to fill out showing that we have completed that process successfully. Next on our agenda is Merrill High School baseball field fencing with an attached topic summary sheet from Dale Bergman and a recommended motion, do we have a motion this evening? Nubs?
Just recommend approve the purchase of fencing project upon receipt of funds from the Booster Club.
Motion by Nubs, second by Chad. Do we have any questions or discussion on this motion or topic this evening? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Do we have any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously on a voice vote. Next item on our agenda this evening is the school forest generator, attached topic summary sheet from Dale Bergman and a recommended motion from our facilities committee, do we have a motion this evening? Chad?
I recommend approving the purchase of backup generator at the school forest.
Motion by Chad, do we have a second? Second by Nubs. Any question or discussion on this motion or this topic this evening? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously on a voice vote. Our next item this evening on our agenda is the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two teacher and support staff handbook adjustments with an attached topic summary sheet provided then. Recommended motion from our finance human resources committee, do we have a motion this evening? Mr. Smith?
All motion to approve the select updates of both the teacher and support staff handbook as presented through twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two school years.
Motion by Mr. Smith, do we have a second? Second by Nubs. Any question or discussion on this motion or this topic?
Kevin, I have a question.
Will I have a?
I think we should put this on hold due to the fact that the four one one two board staff communications is on there and we haven't even voted on those policies yet tonight. So I don't know why we would be putting something in the handbook if we haven't had discussion on the new policies yet, which is four one one two and three one one two. So trying to pass it through the handbook now versus when we're going to be talking potentially about the policies later doesn't make any sense. So I don't know if anyone handled it, I don't know if you want to table this until after the discussion with the policies later on in the meeting, which is in the consent agenda. But we haven't even approved those policies yet and those are further down in this meeting tonight.
Your concerns are noted. I will ask Mr. Smith that motion, if you want any sort of amendment on there or if you want to table this for further information.
Give me a second.
While Mr. Smith is gathering his thoughts, I will ask other board members if there's any other questions on the initial motion that was made or the topic. I would agree with table against until we go through the policies.
Give me a second.
Yes.
I'll reset my motion and motion to move item F in the agenda to a discussion following the consent agenda.
Right, do we have updates? Do we have a second?
Second then.
Any questions on that update? All those in favor of that signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? All right, that has been noted and will be handled accordingly. Next on our agenda is the Head Start staffing adjustment and full day attendance waiver with an attached topic summary sheet from Eddie then. We have recommended motions from both the finance HR committee and the CTP committee. Do we have a motion this evening? Kendra, go ahead.
I recommend a motion to approve the permanent creation of the additional full time teacher at K-9 beginning December twenty twenty one as well as configuration presented in option three or four depending on the directive from the home office, home, I'm sorry, from the office of Head Start, I'll check.
Motion by Kendra, do we have a second? Second by Chad. Is there any discussion or questions on this motion or topic this evening? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Do we have any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously on a voice vote. Next item on our agenda is the addition of five aides at Kate Goodrich Elementary School with an attached topic summary sheet from Eddie then. Recommended motion from our finance HR committee, do we have a motion this evening? Mr. Smith?
All motion to approve the hiring of five additional aide positions at Kate Goodrich Elementary School.
Motion by Mr. Smith, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ron Liberty. Any questions or discussion on this motion or topic? Mr. Krieger, go ahead.
Are these being paid with, or are they being paid for?
We've had a number of positions that we've not been able to fill, so we do have a surplus of staffing positions. Psychologist would be another one. Eddie, as far as the balanced budget, I know it is balanced, but is there anything else to add besides the positions that we've not been able to fill currently?
So the extra teacher position, we ended up doing was moving the family support specialist position out of Grizzle and using qualifications that are digital to support one of the old school positions that we couldn't fill for a social worker and that is going to be replaced with a teaching position. So it was literally a swap, one teacher position for another if you will, and that's where the money suspension came from.
This is the bulk of the state aides, though?
The five aides at Kate Goodrich.
Oh, sorry. Those are all coming through Esser funds, I'm sorry. Yeah, they're all going through the Esser brand.
You might understand, what are we going to do when that money runs out?
The players' lives.
Physician there.
We've got positions there. Those positions that are funded by Esser may not necessarily be the positions that go away, but absolutely any Esser funded positions, we're going to decrease the district by that dollar. Declaring enrollment in this case unfortunately helps us in that position. And it's also our hope that Esser at that point has done what it's designed to do and that's to close the learning gap run, I'm hoping.
Yeah, I'm just a little worried that once, I mean, is it to help them, is it do the class sizes that we're putting these five positions on or is it to get them caught back up or is it both or?
Supervision and instructional for support staff.
Right, right. I'm a little worried once these five are gone, are we going to fund the next five? Two years, our class size ain't going to drop that much. So I'm a little worried about it.
Well, only purchasing while we've been planning to be budgeted for.
I just, I know with the closure of the schools, I don't understand. Like I said, I talked to you a little bit beforehand. I don't understand why we're hiring more when we tried to limit staff positions and now we're hiring more position. A little confusing to me.
The positions I went to go last spring are different, they were teaching positions. The, these positions here are different in the sense that they're aides, of course. Aside from that, I think we've tried to convey and we've included more being documents and things that we've shared in the documentation finance. When the funding runs out, if there are no new sources that are coming or follow ups or anything like that, the plan is like Dr. Sample said, to reassess all the staff and adjust the number of positions that we have. Esser one, two, together are over four million dollars of funding coming into the district. And when we originally brought a proposal to HR finance, the committee had said we should be spending this money on staffing and addressing learning loss. Since then, two key things have happened. One, the legislature kind of turned that concept upside down because there was no new money that has been allowed into the budget. They said, use those funds to do your operations. So that was a key piece that kind of changed there. And the other piece is we had talked about doing some facilities things. And again, the purpose of it was trying to address learning loss, so we went after it. Couldn't hire all those positions, we've made some of those adjustments. We were going to try to get five math coaches, for example, math intervention started. And since then, have figured that given the student ratios and when you look at that type of summary, one of the things that we maybe didn't discuss enough last spring was the transition when you have students who are at four K building, what those students teacher ratios are. And then when we expect students to be able to be successful with at Kate Goodrich, there was a significant change in the ratio roughly right now at Head Start. There are about three teachers, sorry, one teacher and two aides roughly per class of ten to eleven, maybe twelve students. And then when they go to Kate Goodrich, there are about six K to one. And it's literally one year apart and so we wanted to be able to try to address and support. Some of those students, especially with the fact that some of those kids who are coming in Canada didn't go through any four K program at all because of the COVID prior year. So we're hoping if they add support helps create some transition buffer between when they're in the four K setting and the ratios are really low to where they are now in a regular elementary school and the ratio is nearly double. But we do recognize that we'll have to go through some kind of process to reduce staff unless there's other funding. And last year we did some interesting creative things, I think that were helpful, like the reservation for break to recall for teacher cases. And we could do something very similar for support staff. But also the last couple of years, if you look tonight on the topic summary sheet for the turnover, we've experienced enough turnover where a number of those positions, I think, will be, you know, will pay with regards to just the sheer amount of people who retire, resigning or whatever each year. So we'll be able to find spots for a number of those folks, I think. I know this year, given how many aides have turned over, I'd be able to hire all five of those aides because we've had enough people come and go at the last minute. Didn't happen till August, you know, obviously not very easy to notify people, but we didn't have any of those positions, so.
Okay.
Thank you, Chad. Kendra, go ahead.
I just have to follow to that comment. If we find that all of these positions are needed when Esser is done, then you said last year you got creative with how to do things. Is it something where like, I'm not asking for answer, but you know, at some point, I feel like pay of administration, is that something that would ever be taken into consideration? To keep those positions for the students in the district?
Did you say pay for administration or position?
Yeah, so basically you take some pay from administration to pay for those positions and that's what's best for the district. I'm not asking for answer, it's just something I just wanted to comment to.
You could always reduce outside of the contract cycle. You could do teachers, administrators, support staff. You could reduce anybody's wages once they're outside or for the next contract.
Okay.
Yeah, you may have to be out of the contract cycle. You know, and again, to help them and hopefully the communities and where are some of the things that we went through last year, because those who went through it know how tough it is. You guys need board members, so if you vote on it and things like that. But I mean, we were doing score administrators last year, we did a number of teaching roles. We are trying to take those steps to position ourselves so that we're not, you know, having to surprise people. We've tried to be very transparent about it, so.
Yeah, and I think, you know, obviously intuition itself just kind of pulls over just to thought through your comments of what you're seeing, so, thank you.
Thank you, Kendra. Follow up, Chad.
I have one question about the Esser money, is there a certain time that's got to be used up?
Yes, you've got about three years to use it all. Yes, you've got about three years to use it all. And or otherwise in terms of the timings, you can lose it. So right now, if you look at the, what was the name, the leading booklet, but also what I wrote recently, we're scheduled to spend about 1.35 million each year. This year we're spending about a million on staff and the other 350,000 is scheduled for curriculum resources, textbooks that we've talked about going into the various buildings, we've got it ready from elementary up to high school that's looking at curriculum updates, but we will have to look in the next two years, you know, if we're trying to spend that same amount each year and stay in track, what are we gonna do with those 350,000 dollars each year? And whether it ends up in some facility period for the curriculum resources, whatever, those will have to be discussion points, but that'll leave that, hopefully that other million portion of the four staffing piece that we get consistent for the next three years.
And the reason I ask, you know, being a referendum here, I'm wondering, is it, if for some reason we wouldn't get the referendum passed next, you know, for next year, that might be able to help cover some of what we're gonna lose?
Whatever we can put in an in wisereads to convince EPI that this is necessary, yes. You know, we would obviously try to do some of that and offset our costs. Their districts are doing some of that already. Love and I have worked as well here extensively in wisereads to wordsmith, if you will, how those things are done and in so they get accepted and we can use the funds. And we try to approach that to get the maximum flexibility because all this is earmarked as intentions purposes. Esser three, for example, has to have 20% spent on, did they go learning loss or was it a D P I S group, uh, again, or?
Evidence based.
Evidence-based intervention supports or something along those lines, but yeah, we're doing the best we can to maximize our flexibility on it and do what we can to obviously keep consistent staff.
Great, thank you.
Thank you Chad. Any additional questions? Go ahead Linda.
Yeah, so I guess if you're saying we have three years to utilize, three years to utilize that money and we're facing some deficits possibility next year depending on what the referendum outcome is, why don't we save that money? Because we may need it. I mean, hiring five new people that are guaranteed to keep their jobs for the next five years is not really fair and why do you keep longevity here in the community if all of a sudden you hired core staff and all of a sudden, oh, sorry, see you later? Or you're waiting for somebody to retire or resign in order for somebody to keep their job? I don't think that's very fair either, you know, so I would, why don't we just want to hang on to the money in case we do need it for a rainy day, I guess?
If we save it all for the end, you got a couple of things that would come into play. One, we're assuming that EPI would approve everybody who we tried to put on there. So if we couldn't get all the positions that we needed or wanted to put on there approved, you might be in a tight spot to spend that money and you'll be spending it on something that's like capital related and they'll say we had to cut positions, but you added or what of this, whether it's a vehicle or a HVAC system or whatever. So you have, you got some risk there if you start to save it off for the end and 4.1 million dollars is a lot to try to spend. And the other piece to that is when you go and do that, if you go and use all that federal money, your taxpayers are gonna go on a wild ride with their tax rate.
I don't think I said save it till the very end, I just thought, you know, spread it out for the next three years if we needed to instead of paying it right now for five new employees.
We, and that's what we're doing, is it's, it's, yes, 1.35 million a year for three years, correct? Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah, so we can sit on, like I said, that 300 or so thousand that like this year we're doing some textbook and curriculum renewal, we can sit on some of that and see how things go with the referendum and we'll have that information that the referendum will happen through April, so that'll be plenty of time for us to decide still what we want to do with those remaining, getting 50,000 dollars for the following year.
Thank you Linda. Additional question by Mr. Smith?
Just to comment the benefit of the discussion that took place at the committee, the recommendation for the five aides came to us from Kate Goodrich and their staff. It's in response to the major loss of learning that has occurred with the K through second grade student and we all know that our obligation is to recover that loss using those federal funds. So if we wanted to hire teachers, we wouldn't be able to because there are no teachers to hire because that's the major employment shortage. So what we can do, an alternative is take some of the pressure off of the classroom by hiring the aides so that the teachers can focus on recovery. And I think what is more important is not so much what we, you know, the perspective of employment circumstances of people who don't work for the district yet, but that we put the children's best interest in mind and that is to give them all the staff they can get to recover that loss. So I look at it from a student's perspective first, we have the money, it's being provided by the federal government and this is what we can do to help in the meantime. And it's, it's a desperate help, the reports that came out on learning loss are staggering for the state. So if that K one, two, three is left to just continue with that loss, you will, you will feel that pain in the next eight years of their education here at Merrill. So I think we should hammer down every last resource we have on our elementary schools right now because that will come back to bite us in years to come.
We, we also talked to the committee too about the fact that we've got some very specialized and highly qualified teachers who do things like title reading or social coaching, technology integration, and a number of those folks are doing, doing tech-related activities that if we had extra support, they would be able to help address the learning loss, so.
Yeah, I guess, I mean, yeah, I understand there's a lot of need in learning and I'm always thinking about the students and the teachers and, you know, the whole community as a whole. We do all have to function together. But what happens when these students move on to the next grades and we no longer have these aides to help these children? So we're back to square one again because we no longer have money to fund them. I mean, depending on what the outcomes of the next couple of years here, we can't guarantee to have those aides with us forever. Unfortunately, that's, I mean, it's just kind of the reality, they're not gonna be able to stay in the district forever if we run out of money.
Correct, and the Esser funding is designed to, to catch them up so to speak, is to address that learning loss over the next three years to get them back on track because as you know, since, since COVID, it has not been advantageous, our means of learning and our lack of face-to-face. And so hopefully at that point, things are back to somewhat normal and we can continue. Also, it's important to realize too, whether it's going through a referendum and failing or losing some Esser funding, it's, it's never, it's positions that we lose and not necessarily personnel because we do have retirements and resignations, those are something that you can't always count on. But, you know, we're seeing now with the baby boomers, myself being one, we're getting older and we're retiring, so there's gonna be that and as well as there's gonna be shortages coming up from positions that we won't be able to fill. So I'm very confident and hopeful that anybody that does want a position and maps will be able to be retained and still be able to work. Thank you Linda. Brett, go ahead.
I think it's important to keep in mind that if the community as a whole, you not hearing me?
Not very well known on this time for.
I think it's important to note that if the community as a whole votes no on a referendum, they have to accept the consequences of that no vote. If they, I mean, if that's what they decide to do, majority says no, it's not gonna supply more funding, well, then they have to accept the fact that what's gonna happen in this school district by their vote of no. So for us to build a plan and execute what we want to do, but also hope that the referendum passes, I mean, it's kind of, it's a community thing and if they decide to, we're given four million dollars, spend it, I mean, otherwise it could be taken away, so.
Thank you Brett. Any other questions or discussion on this topic or motion? Hearing none, we'll call for the votes. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries on a voice vote. Next item on our agenda this evening is an anonymous donation for the baseball scoreboard. Attached was the donation form and information provided from baseball coach Sean Schulz regarding the donation of funds from that anonymous donor valued at $6,019 for a baseball scoreboard here at Merrill High School Field. Due to the fact that the donation is over the $2,500 limit set by policy 7230, this donation comes to the board separately for approval. There is a recommended motion from a past facilities committee. Do we have a motion this evening? Maria?
Who to approve the donation of funds from the anonymous donor valued at $6,019, excuse me, for a baseball scoreboard at Merrill High School and thank said anonymous donor for saying.
We have a motion by Maria, second, second by Kendra. Is there any questions or discussion on this topic or motion this evening? Hearing none, all those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries on a voice vote. Next item on our agenda is the facility and transportation updates attached, attach a summary sheet from Dr. Sample and Dale Birdman. Dr. Sample, would you like to highlight that?
Each of the committees has recommended that we cease the standing agenda item and to go with any topics that may come up as usual, we'll go to a committee and then hopefully before we take forward from there. The last of the standing agenda items, I included, we included an update on activity in athletic blessing, that was per board member request. Also, since the board admin retreat was postponed, there's not been a tour of Jefferson yet. The tour was to discuss the potential use of Jefferson as professional development committee, maybe even a coordinating site, and so that will be in the future. And then the building consolidation, which is coming up on Dale's facilities committee with the shortage of parking spaces at Kate Goodrich, that is also an oversight, I guess, due to the consolidation, something that we did not think of, and so that is being addressed at future committees. So that kind of closes out this as a standing agenda item, although any items of importance will still continue to be brought forth with the committee and hopefully to the board.
Thank you Dr. Sample. As stated, the, each of the committees had a recommended motion to remove the topic as a standing agenda item. Is there someone willing to make that motion this evening? Kendra?
I recommend a motion removing the, oh geez, I'm just, I'm sorry. I recommend a motion removing this topic as a standing agenda item for all meetings and return related topics to the building committee as an amended basis.
Motion by Kendra, do we have a second? Second by Chad. Any discussion or questions on the motion or this topic? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries on a voice vote. Next item on our agenda is a local health officer authority. Topic is placed on the agenda by the request of a board member asking specifically the question, does the local health officer have the legal authority to order a school district with a signature? Throughout the process, I guess I'll turn it over to Dr. Sample. At our places this evening, we did have some follow-up, we did have some individual discussions to begin with, with administration and at that point I felt for the good of everybody to have a legal opinion, so we contacted Mike Chalka from Board McClark and found out within their organization, Brian Goodman was the person looking into that for most districts, so he was their subject matter expert. I don't know if people had a chance to read the board numbers or not. This time I will turn it over to Dr. Sample for any highlights or any discussion through the process from the last few weeks on this topic. Great, and that's, that's basically it in a nutshell, really. Kevin asked me to get legal counsel advice and so Brian Goodman is that person at Board McClark and he touched on several different areas that I think covered the motion to the board and the information that the board is hoping to receive. So with that, I'll turn the floor over to Maria.
I guess with just seeing this tonight and trying to read through this briefly to understand the legal opinion, I guess I still have a question and I'm not sure that it's covered, this legal opinion, but we had talked about contact tracing and the resources that the district is using for contact tracing and I understand from asking for that data, we can't quantify how much time is put in by district resources, is that correct? In contact tracing, individuals who may have been exposed to a positive case?
Great, it is difficult to nail down the time invested in contact tracing. I know that we were following our policy with communicable diseases and, and doing what, what we felt is safe for our students and our staff. I mean, with other superintendents, they contact trace as well. I know Marathon County is the outlier right now, they've got a new health official at Marathon County and so I, I know that they do things just a little bit differently there. I can't answer for them or speak for them, but I know the word Lincoln County and our advice and our reckoning, our correction has always been to follow the recommendations of Lincoln County Health Department. So as far as contact tracing, we could ask legal as well, ask specific question.
But there's no precedent, there's no legal precedent set that we are required to contact trace. That's something that we have made a decision to do as a district and there are no other businesses as far as I know in Lincoln County that are required to contact trace. It is us that chooses to do it, is that correct?
Tell me about school district as well.
Okay, so two school districts in Lincoln County as opposed to every other business are requiring themselves to contact trace. This is not a legal matter, we are saying sure, Lincoln County will contact trace for you.
I think one more.
Is that fair?
I think you have a fair point, I think one of the, one of the topics perhaps to repeat either yourself or Karen, so I better understand if the rest of the board is mandatory reporting piece where that starts and why we choose to do what could be somebody else's role or not, even if there's a shortage of employees or staffing or county health department to contact trace through all, all the businesses or just even through the school district, which is mandatory reporting. Could you, you or Mrs. Baker comment on mandatory reporting piece and tie that together, not only the safety pieces, anything as far as contact tracing, please?
Well, Karen's coming up, I, from my perspective, there's a difference between public school and working with children ages three and up versus private industry where I'm hoping that children ages three and up are not working there, we're working with adults in private industry and it's in public schools, so the only two public school districts in the, in this county are, are contact tracing, so that's what I can say from my perspective as far as, as the safety that we are required to provide our students and staff.
We work cooperatively with Lincoln County Health Department. If we were to have Lincoln County Health Department do all contact tracing, then that means. means they would be in our buildings doing the same process we are. The way that this cooperation works is I am notified of a positive case that information is passed on to the schools. The individuals in the schools are the ones who are fully aware of who sits where in a classroom, who is sat by whom in a lunchroom, et cetera. So if we were to have Lincoln County come in, they are going to do the same process, they're going to ask the exact same questions that we are able to do far more quickly within each of the buildings. My understanding, and I can't confirm, I don't have a business in Merrill, is the same process happens in a business. If an employee tests positive, then the Lincoln County Health Department contacts that individual and or that business, asks that individual or business owner who has been in or in contact with that person. So it's a universal process that is handled throughout the county.
But Lincoln County gets the information from the district as COVID too. So I'm in class, I'm positive, we know all the children that are around me, and then at this point in time, we take that information and we make those calls, we use district resources to make those calls for dozens, if not hundreds, of children. And Lincoln County has stepped in, disagreed with what this board has approved, and said, no, you're going to do it our way, but we are still supposed to help Lincoln County and say, we'll do the contact tracing for you when we're in a referendum year? And when we are already stretched thin with learning, we're taking individuals from our district who are supposed to be helping students with learning and contact tracing for Lincoln County, I don't agree.
I respectfully disagree. Our role as a district is to keep everyone safe, and that comes first. Safety comes ahead of academics. If our students are not safe, then they cannot learn. I think we need to remember that this is a pandemic and none of us have chosen this path. None of us enjoy going down this path, but we must keep our students safe. We are not doing Lincoln County's job, we are working in cooperation collaboratively to keep our students safe.
And I would agree that student safety is top priority. My disagreement with Lincoln County is whose job is it to contact trace? That's my point. And I don't think it's the district's responsibility, just as any other business, to contact trace. We can give the information to Lincoln County that they need to do their job to contact trace, but I don't think it's any employee's responsibility in the district to be making those calls, to be putting themselves in the quote-unquote line of fire to these families. I think that's Lincoln County's job, I think Lincoln County has asked for this, and I think that Lincoln County needs to contact trace and not the district. I think we have other things to do, I think that are higher priorities for our students, and I think that my opinion is that this is Lincoln County's job to go ahead and do this process of contact tracing.
Thank you, Maria. Any other discussion or questions on this topic? Chad, go ahead, you have the floor.
Karen, I'm just going to ask, do you think you're doing better with contact tracing than doing what you were hired to do?
I was hired to keep students and staff safe in the district, particularly as a director of people's services. My job involves many different hats in various venues, just like any other administrator, teacher, teacher assistant, et cetera. And we do the job that's presented above or before us on any given day, on any given situation that we are presented with.
I understand that, but you know, you were hired to contact trace.
I was hired to carry out the policies that have to do with the safety of students and staff.
And our policy that we passed was that we weren't going to do the contact trace?
That's a board decision, and personally, I'm not going to get involved in that discussion. I'm going to carry out the policies that have to do with communicable diseases, and also in my role as working with the Lincoln County Health Department as they hold the contract to provide all of our nursing services within the district.
I mean, I don't know, I mean, I know I talked to John, and John didn't realize, the county does have a page for contact tracers. That is a job for the county. They actually take applications, they're currently taking applications for it. I guess I might, my other, just like the middle school principal, wouldn't his job, how much time does he spend contact tracing, calling families? And he should be doing the work that he needs to get done.
I don't know how much time, and I'll be honest, that's not for me to supervise. Respectfully.
Dr. Sample, would you like to comment? I believe the building principals would be under your review and authority.
That was tough, I mean, we have Lincoln County come in and do it, they're going to be asking us for class lists and who's in this class and who was seated where, so that part I don't understand, it's still going to be timed, and so I mean, I don't, we don't log what we do every day, I mean, I'm good doing great to be able to tell you the meetings that I've attended each month, but I can't, we don't log what we do every single day, so it's hard for us to contact trace, and it ebbs and flows, it depends. We'd all rather not be in, absolutely, I guarantee you, because this is getting very old. But we also are very cognizant, and I'm reminding everybody every day that COVID fatigue is real, we need to stay above the line and do what we can. And our number one priority is safety, so I'll do anything for safety.
Chad, anything else?
No.
All right, Brett, followed by Kendra.
So on September 28th, we had a long meeting sitting in here, making a decision unanimously of the board. To take around this topic, October 15th, to get notified, sorry, not October 15th, lost the date of the, sorry, Monday, October 4th, we get notified in an email that our health department officer is basically saying with a signature, we can't do what we're elected to do, making a decision. And then on October, so that was October 4th, then we wait till October 25th, so that was Monday, this email looks like it was, came back from Boardman Clark, explaining, I guess somewhat vaguely, but I have 30 seconds to read, that the public health officer can tell elected official what to do with a signature. But yeah, I guess I haven't had time to read through this and fully have thought on it, which I think the summation of my thoughts, right now I'm just hearing disappointed in how this all has kind of transpired, that it is the duty of yourself to execute your duties that are outlined in your job description, but the main priority of that is the Board of Education. And the board made a decision, and then unanimously, a member of the public with a different title and a different organization eliminates and degrades what we made a decision for, we get notified in an email and it's just done. There was no follow-up to it till Monday, October 25th, at the request of a board member for this agenda item. Backtracking a little bit, I maybe would like to have seen something sooner than that, rather than all of us just sit here in this free space of, well, I guess what Charlie Herschel says is law. I would have liked to have seen this email before I sat down here tonight. I'm not a fan of having copious amounts of meetings and dragging everybody back into more meetings and deliberating back and forth over topics that have been beat to death in the past 12 months, but I guess my thoughts on this matter can't be resolved until I can read this more clearly, and if it requires another meeting to discuss what the attorneys are saying, or have attorneys on the phone to have a conversation with them, to answer other various questions, it might be worthwhile. I share Maria's opinions that, and that Charlie Herschel does not have the authority to do this, and I also don't think it is our duty as a district to spend whatever amount of time assisting them if this is how they want to act in good faith. If our relationship is not in good faith, I don't see this as good faith. And kind of finally, on that point, safety is a top priority, but my job as a board member is also to provide education to students, which I think we've seen in our data, isn't necessarily the best for proficiency in that reading, so I'd like to also execute the duty of making sure that our students are getting a proper education, and I think this is kind of hindering that, so that's my thoughts, I don't, I guess action I want until I can read this somewhere, so.
If I can, I defend myself that I do serve the board. On October 4th, I received the order at 1:30 PM. On October 4th at 1:49 PM, I saw advice from Kevin, and I received a response from Kevin on October 4th at 2:03 PM that we should change, we need to follow that order. And so that's exactly what I did. As you know, that it puts me in a very difficult spot, especially when someone with the attorney referred to things such as a disregard of their order could result in imprisonment, so I'm being put in the middle as well. But I did not act on my own accord without at least the board president's actions. He also recommended, I believe it was later on Friday, to contact the attorney on Monday morning to get a response. On Tuesday, we received that. On Tuesday, I said, Kevin, how would you like us to share that? And then I emailed him again after no response this afternoon, and said, how would you like me to share that? Let's put her at the table here for the board members' copy, so that's what's happening in between, I'm not acting on my own accord.
Thank you. Yes, and to respond to that before I call on Kendra and John. Brett, long story short, when we were working on the agenda preparation and everything that Dr. Sample said was accurate, I did not see what the presentation was going to be anything different than our special board meeting night at that point, which was after posting last Thursday or Friday. I had contacted Dr. Sample and said I needed an official legal opinion, and we've trusted Boardman Clark, so at this point, literally, never, let's get that instead of coming here and sharing the same data we did at the special board meeting, feeling that we have no more information other than administration is following the guidance of Lincoln County Health, the CDC and other organizations that are providing that guidance. So yes, everything Dr. Sample said is true. I believe his contact after I talked to him on, it could have even been after hours on Friday, was to get a hold of Boardman Clark, and we got this information, and...
Friday was in...
Last Friday was, yes, probably, give or take 5:00, 5:30 PM, when I realized that there was no topic summary, there was no other information, so I had to make the educational decision that at that point, we were only going to review the data that we did before that special board meeting and not have the question answered, so I had asked or instructed Dr. Sample to contact Boardman Clark, open that line of communication with Mike Chalka and Brian Goodman, so I could fill in the blanks, ask the Dr. Sample to get this legal opinion. At that point, when we did have this answer, I can only apologize for not responding to Dr. Sample or having this to you prior, I did not respond, he had asked me, I should have asked that he sent out or attached as a topic summary or part of a topic summary sheet, and I did not. Normally, we work in tandem on that, and it did not happen. When I realized that today, I did ask him to have Tammy Waller print those out and bring them here, so we can all see that if we needed to work on that, we will handle that accordingly. Apologies on the late notice.
This email from Boardman Clark was requested on Friday, the 22nd?
Was requested first thing Monday. It was requested by me in the discussion this weekend. Dr. Sample reached out to them, they responded promptly on Monday morning, and then I did not respond to him when he asked me how to share that with others until today. And I realized that it wasn't attached, or we did not have anything there, so I asked at that time to have a thought here, so we could review it accordingly. Any follow-up there, Brett? Okay. Next, I had Kendra followed by John.
Yeah, just to piggyback off of Brett and Maria's comments. Dr. Sample and Karen, have you had to contact the families in the contact tracing yourselves? And I would say from timeline, I'm thinking this year towards the end of last year.
Have I personally contacted families or no?
No. So I'm assuming, Karen, there's, sorry, go ahead.
I have had, excuse me, I have had some communication with families, primarily when families have had questions, they have called me and we've talked through situations.
Okay. And the reason I ask is, you mentioned COVID fatigue, and we talk about safety, and I'm assuming that a lot of parents, when you contact them, now I haven't had to do it, and obviously it doesn't sound like you've had it much either, are probably not happy. So my question is about the staff's wellbeing, and what type of verbal abuse are they taking over the phone when they make these phone calls? Are we checking in on that? Are we aware of what they're going through?
I have continual communication with many of the administrators. If they have a situation where a parent, excuse me, has concerns or is upset, then that is oftentimes when I'm following up with them as well. I will share that, and I've had conversations with parents after we've had dialogue, they have ended on a very fine note, to be very honest.
Okay, thank you, that's all.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Kendra. Mr. Smith, followed by Linda.
Yeah, thank you. I asked a question, I asked it on October 9th for the record. The question I ask is not really anything to do with contact tracing or, the question is, is does an individual who holds the title of health officer have the legal authority to direct an employee of the district, such as a superintendent, and then supersede the unanimous vote of the governing body, the school board? I asked this question out of ignorance because it seems odd that when you read legislative statute 252, there is authorities in there, but there are authorities in communication with citizens, so they can direct citizens to do things, and they can direct buildings to open and close, but can they influence the day-to-day operations of a school system? And I couldn't find anything that would indicate that if a county health officer sat down at a laptop and typed a well-written resolution with a lot of whereas statements and then signed the bottom of it, it all of a sudden superseded the entire authority of elected school board? I just don't see it. I would like to be educated. I'm not yet. It does say in the statement that even if this is not a valid order, which based on what I read would probably likely be the case, it says arguably, the district's actions could constitute an obstruction of the execution of the state statutes or regulations. That's a redundant statement. What are the state statutes and regulations? What authority does the officer have? Can an officer of a county tell a superintendent what to do, and is the superintendent therefore obligated to follow it? I don't know. That's why I asked the question. I still don't know, even though I have legal evidence in front of me of some nature. Not looking for a recommendation from a lawyer, because he's like, the safest course that actually would be to comply with the order in quotation marks. I don't know. I'm an elected official, you're all elected officials, we sit out of order. There's laws that govern that. I would like to just follow... There's laws that govern that. I would like to just follow the law. I understand the intentions of the superintendent when he receives this very well-written document from this very official-type person in our county. And I don't begrudge him his actions, but I also don't want this board to lose its authorities to govern. The school boards are designed to do. But we did sit here on September 28th for a period of three hours, had a long, healthy debate. We did make a unanimous motion and have it completely overturned on Monday. That motion still stands, by the way, because we run under, we run under the rules of parliamentary procedure. And our rules of parliament don't take into consideration that outside agencies can come in and write us letters. It just doesn't exist. So I'm just looking for some clarification because right now this is complete fiction, yet we're following. Thank you.
Thank you, John. And so Linda's hand up. Any follow-up there, Linda?
Yeah, I guess I'm agreeing with the rest of the board members on that as well. Uh, it's very frustrating and the administrators and the secretaries are working their butts off every day when this happens. I've seen it. I've experienced it. And it's going to be very tiring for them as well. I mean, and John, you got your stuff going on with all that stuff you were just reading because I totally agree with you. But, um, did, when this order came, I mean, when you guys presented this to the health department, did you fight, I mean, fight for what the board wanted? Or did you just say, okay, no, this is it. We're going to go with what you have? I mean, because, I mean, instruction, I know I wasn't at the meeting and I apologize. Um, but I did get to watch the video of everything that was discussed that night with my fellow board members and the decisions that they made. And I agreed with what they, they went with. But the instruction of the board, I mean, how was it presented to the health department? Because I know my, I mean, my take of it is, I don't think some of the administrators are all on board with what the board really wanted. So when it was presented to the health department, I mean, was it this is what our board wants? Or was it this is what our district wants kind of thing?
This was not presented at all to the health department. The health department has, uh, they, they understand what happens at board meetings. And so, no, they, they understood what happened at the special board meeting. It's not like we went to the health department afterward saying, hey, did you see what happened? I mean, it's already...
I just wasn't sure how that all worked out, you know? The next thing is that when that order came through, um, you know, Kevin gave you instructions, but I think as a fellow board member, it would have been nice to know what was going on. And not just having, I mean, Kevin, I mean, giving instructions to Mr. Samples, you know, it should have made me kind of board, whole board decision on what we should have did with that order. But, um, that's all I have to say. I mean, these times are tough and I would like to go back to normal. They are kids back to school because they belong in school. But, um, I agree with the rest of my board members. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Yep, followed by Maria.
I agree with John. I think, uh, what we need is a simple yes or no. Yes, we have to follow the, I can help, county health department order, or no, we don't have to follow. We could talk about this all night, but it'll tell we have a yes or a no. Uh, it's like we had three hours that one night and got overridden. We need a yes or no. Then we can move on with what we're going to do. So...
Understood, nuts. And, uh, Maria?
And I agree with what we're saying here. I think that we need better clarification because I don't think the answers are all there yet for what we really need and what happened. Um, but in the meantime, I move to eliminate the use of district resources to contact trace individuals potentially exposed to positive COVID cases in the MANS district. I'll second that motion.
We have a motion by Maria, seconded by Linda. Were you able to capture that, Tammy?
No, I got to. Um, I move to eliminate the use of district resources to contact, contact trace individuals potentially exposed to positive COVID cases in the MANS district.
So moved by Maria, seconded by Linda. You get that in? With a motion there, go ahead. We're going to ask for discussion or questions in a moment. Kendra, you captured the motion. I would turn the floor over. Any question or discussion on that motion? Okay, yes, so I'm asking for any clarifying questions on the motion or any discussion. John, go ahead.
I think before I couldn't get conscious vote for this, I, I, I think the board and the administration have an obligation to get back on the same page. Am I disappointed that my contribution to governance was overturned? Uh-huh. And I would like that clarified. But I also would want to maintain the integrity of the relationship that we have with the administration as a board. Um, because as much as I don't feel as though contact tracing is appropriate um, in every single circumstance, and it's riddled with non-scientific ironies every minute of every day. Um, we are moving in a direction of not working together internally. And we might disagree with the health department, which I tend to. Um, but I don't want to disagree with you, Chuck, because I don't know if that, if that will be to the best benefit of a student tomorrow afternoon and then parents and everyone else. So I guess I ask that that be taken into consideration that we are capable of meeting with our administrators as a group in a retreat, in another meeting, um, to discuss this specific issue with more detail, um, before we simply order them to do something that there might not be a... Might not execute like we want it to up here on the stage, is my concern. I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. My, my clarification to the motion would be this. So if someone from Lincoln County Health Department was in charge of contact tracing, they would still come into that building as an outsider and ask our administration, teachers, lunch people, whatever the case may be for input, would be my understanding. I, I could be wrong in envisioning the process wrong. So at that point, would they provide help, would it be led by somebody else? I, I'm hearing no resources. And no resources means even though we're mandatory reporting entity, that once they came to us, even that we would say, no, I can't do that. The board said no. So to me, there's perhaps a, a shift of leadership or discussion there versus saying, hey, we don't even believe in contact tracing accounting. We're just not willing to supply the money or resources. So could you clarify that part of that for me, please, Maria?
Sure. I guess the spirit of what I'm saying is, and I get what you're saying, John. Um, just to hit this two-fold. First, to agenda and set it, um, I don't want to cause a rift between the board and administration. However, I think some points that have been brought up tonight, um, I think that there are questions as to how administration is portraying information to Lincoln County and how those conversations go. So I think that there's a bit of, and I don't want to say mistrust, but a question, at least in my own head, as to how these conversations are going with regard to what the board is, is directing, ordering, and how that's presented to Shelley Herschel as Lincoln County health officer, that is first and foremost. Uh, with regard to what you're saying, Kevin, uh, I don't want to not cooperate, but I don't want the primary responsibility to fall upon the resources that we have here. I don't want the administrators to be in the line of fire for families when this is Lincoln County, that is really impressing upon us what we have to do based on an order that was signed one business day after we set a directive as a board of this district. And we were told, no. And subsequently, here we are as a board, told that we can't do business that way. There is one person in Lincoln County who's going to supersede what we have set as a board and what we have done after hours and hours and hours, and we don't have COVID fatigue as well. Uh, so I get it. But I am just saying, it's not that I want to not cooperate with administration, not cooperate with Lincoln County, but I do want Lincoln County to have this fall upon their shoulders as the primary responsibility to contact trace, not us. Yes, they would have to come in. That's how I would foresee it, give them the information. But they would actually be making the calls, not the principals, not our associate principals, not anyone else in a position with a degree that's not their job. And just as a side note, we've never had the Lincoln County health officer here to speak to this board. We have been in a pandemic for almost two years. We do not have her here. What does that say to the board? That she can, you know, after we make a decision as a board, a well thought out, well discussed decision, that we don't have the respect to come in here and speak to this board? That's frustration for me as well. So I went off a little bit. Does that answer your question?
Actually, a movie, though. If you go to the order, feel free to share it.
No, it does answer my question. Um, I guess when I'm picturing what you said was basically all, all hands off, no resources, no help.
But to give the information, as she comes to us, if the county comes to us and says, tell me the names of the children that were around this positive case, of course, we're not going to not comply with that, but actually be making those calls and doing the contact tracing. Like Chad said, there's several contact tracing jobs open on the Lincoln County website right now. Um, they're contact tracing for every other business, which is not us and apparently kind of lots of districts.
Thank you for clarification. Mr. Smith, go ahead.
Then perhaps would you consider modifying your motion to instruct the administration to arrange a joint meeting of the board, the Lincoln County Health Board and the administration?
Oh, sure. I think, I think that'd be great. I mean, to, to collaborate and, and to try and come on this case, sure. I was just trying to draw a line in the sand because we have a line drawn for us already.
Oh, I understand. I think we, you are, you were spot on in the fact that the Lincoln County Health Department is exactly, as I said, a department of Lincoln County. And they have their officials, they have their budgets, they have their personnel. Um, and they are not us and we are not them. But we communicate through our superintendent and through their officer. Um, and I don't think that's required, like, it doesn't have to be that way. Um, and we could just simply, uh, ask that we have a joint meeting with Lincoln County Health Department and the Merrill Area Public School District, and the employees thereof can sit in the wings and assist us in having a healthy conversation uh, because they are subordinate to their elected authorities. But these, these two, these two elected bodies simply have not communicated in 20 months, which in itself is a little hard to wrap your head around.
Right.
Um, but I think therein lies the entire problem. Is this, they, there's a refusal to communicate or to order. Um, and so I think that needs to take place if we want to basically heal from what's, what's happening. And it's difficult for the administration because they are smack dab in the middle. Um, and so they want to meet the expectations of the county health department, which I get. But then they have, you know, a body of nine that has expectations, and this has come to this test. So we, I would be in favor of directing that joint meeting. If it's denied, nobody wants to talk to us, well, there you have your answer, right? Like, no, we will not talk to the Merrill Area Public School Board, says, fill the blank. Personally, I don't think that'd be a great decision, but, um, when we're asking to collaborate. So would you consider a change in your motion?
Absolutely. And I think that's very reasonable. Hopefully, everybody can come to the table and thank you for being more reasonable than I this evening.
It's just a coincidence that happened that way.
I appreciate it. Um, so yeah, I, I mean, I guess I can, um, I can simply amend my motion to move to, um, have administration reach out to the Lincoln County, I'm trying to talk slow, T and B, big at the same time, Lincoln County to set up a meeting to discuss the COVID situation and protocols, situation protocols and responsibilities of each entity, of entities.
Maria, could I, can I ask to have an open meeting, not just a closed meeting?
Absolutely.
In a, in a closed room with a few board members, an open meeting with the entire board?
Yes, absolutely. That's good.
I would argue that would happen with this.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Maria, Lincoln County Health Department, I just want to make sure that we're inviting the right people to the table. There's also the, the county board.
And, and I don't know the whole structure. If somebody has better information, I'm just hoping to be by the health department. Is that what you need, the Lincoln County Health Department? Because we are, I mean, not just the number of people we're talking to right here, or who we want to invite to the table. Um, so I guess what specifically?
Yes, the board.
Yeah, so there's a board.
There's a board.
There's a health board too and the Lincoln County, like, itself, so I mean... Who do we want to invite to the table?
You don't want the whole county board.
No.
You want the county health department.
Health department, yeah.
Especially the director.
Yeah.
The director and anybody else from the health department that wants to be with us.
The health, is that a separate committee? Is that what that is?
I think that was a meeting, right? I believe the clarifying point is just that a committee of Lincoln, Lincoln County, or you're specifically talking Lincoln County's health department? The health department?
Okay, I think that was the question, not what venue of ours would we have it at? I believe, um, the request or recommendation would be a special board meeting, an open session.
Everybody knows what we want. I mean, we're splitting hairs on this. We've been working with these people for 20 months, all on the phone.
Yeah, exactly.
Would it be fair to say that, uh...
But I need to clarify this.
Someone else is trying to clarify that, I believe. Go ahead.
When, when you say amend a motion, are you adding to your original one? Are you striking out?
Striking out.
Striking out your original one and add, adding to...
Okay.
So we could rescind and add that data or strike through it?
Okay. You have to hold it to the stage in our future. Do I need to make that, because I didn't say that?
If you are still willing to...
Yeah, I'll second to extend that motion from the original.
And not to support.
And then, I mean, a second, maybe a motion.
All right. Thank you, Maria. Thank you, Linda. I will ask if there's any additional clarifying questions, but I think we've discussed one.
Have we ever asked them to come to a meeting before? The health, the health director?
For our special board meeting, I did ask if they had availability for that evening, and I was told...
So you don't think we're wasting our time asking them again? I'm just asking. I mean, we have, we're, 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 we're doing the same thing. We're now asking for another, we're, we're going to do the exact same thing that we already did.
We're going to heal, mend our ways.
We're going to heal, mend our ways, open communications again.
I, I, I get it, I mean, I just, I'm just asking if we're repeating ourselves or if we're just, I, I, in my mind, we're repeating ourselves.
I think this is, the, the only difference, Chad, is full board action versus a friendly request to attend. By myself and asking if they could. So I see this as that next step up with the entire board. But you, you are very. I'm directing, uh, without the crystal ball over there or over here, I, I do not have an answer as to the response. We can only make an educated summation of how that call may or may not go.
I, I just, I was just asking if we would, if we're repeating ourselves, that's all.
I think it's different because it's from the whole board, but I.
Well, the whole board was there before.
I, I understand the request to do what it needs and the way it's being asked.
Correct.
All right, follow up from Kendra.
Um, could we somehow get an answer to our outstanding question that John had so eloquently stated earlier? About can they do that? Can they overturn? Like, is there a legal? John, please help me, I produced it so much better. But is there a legal, is there statute or law that's actually required that this was able to occur, the overturn? Are we able to get a direct answer by the time of the meeting?
Doctor Sample and I can ask Brian Givon that exact question if that's what the board.
I would like to have it before we have the meeting, then.
It would, and, and I, I would as well. Uh, I know that attorneys typically don't say yes or no because they, they just typically don't.
Right.
They're more grown up than that. Uh, is it, from what I'm hearing, would it be advantageous to this board to postpone the board admin retreat? Uh, until we can establish a meeting and reach out again to bring them forward, hopefully a yes, no answer.
Or utilize, or utilize that time for that meeting? If we could get that together since it was already on calendars? Tammy, has that been posted at this time?
No.
So if we can get an answer within the guidelines, perhaps our time is better served with that as the topic versus a board admin retreat, if we can get all parties together.
That would be for next Tuesday, then, huh?
Yeah, and that, that is pretty, pretty aggressive. I understand that.
I think so, too.
Yes. Yep, we, we need to start somewhere and I guess that would be part of the discussion of that motion is if the intent not have this as something that takes weeks or months to put together, the sooner the better, both answering the question. And Mrs. Austin's raised in regards to the Boardman Clark, yes, no answer versus the legal opinion? I would buy the motion that we're about to vote on.
My only concern would be with, to Chad's point, this, uh, Tuesday night is a special board meeting. And so that's, I need to make, I, I need to make sure the agenda is tight for that so we can post it. And we did try with the special board meeting in the past and I was thinking that this would be more informal, but I can certainly, with the board's wishes, reach out for availability for Tuesday evening at the special board meeting.
And if we don't have the appropriate time and resources, we can, we can work on that. I think it's the sooner the better. And we've got Brett with the follow-up, followed by Mr. Smith. Brett?
My concern if we set, uh, Tuesday, we're twelve because it's already looked on schedule, but like you just shared, I guess my concern would be that we'll get the same response as we got the last time that we had a special meeting and if we had it as more of a informal event, maybe for an informal meeting, maybe we would be better served with our attendance or attendance from anybody there. I guess that'd be my initial concern with that. Um, side comment, Kevin, if you are reaching to Boardman Clark to make clarification. Um, John's question, could you also add, uh, school boards have the authority to subpoena individuals? I'd like to have Boardman Clark's opinion on that.
All right, but I'll add that to the, to the dialogue. If he has no answer on the first question of the authority piece. Legal authority orders, who district, when you said signature on an order, followed, followed up by if a school board has the authority to subpoena an individual. Thank you. Next thing, Mr. Smith, listen up.
Yeah, I just wanted to offer that we have the board retreat scheduled and I'm sure there was an agenda that was going to take place at that evening's meeting. Um, and that we shouldn't, in my opinion, rush a meeting for the sake of rushing it, um, because it's an invitation. And so, you know, find a mutually agreeable time when both the county health department and the mass can meet under invitation. Um, so that we can have a healthy collaborative discussion. Um, if we inserted it to the Tuesday night meeting, it's, it's, you subtract Saturday and Sunday and it's three days to make a decision. Um, I think we can do two things at one time. We can continue to govern our district and the board retreat is part of that function. And then we can have a separate meeting with an invitation in the county health department to basically figure out how we're going to mediate what our resources as a district and their resources as a county. So I think it should be separate, but doesn't need to be urgent because urgency will just create the same level of anxiety that we're running with right now.
Does that make sense, Mr. Smith, for clarifying?
Yes, thank you.
Linda, go ahead.
Yeah, I agree with John because I was, um, I guess, you know, looking forward to the board retreat and, you know, getting to go check on the stuff that you guys did. Um, talking to us about the Jefferson School, um, stuff. So I just think we should, you know, go along with the retreat, the board retreat and then schedule a different meeting or that, a special meeting for that.
Thank you, Linda. Any additional discussion on this topic for the motion? Tammy, could you, for the good of the order, before I call the vote, can you reread the motion as you have it noted?
Um, well, the, the first motion was to extend it by Maria, second by Linda. Then there's a motion by Maria, will be to have administration to reach out to the Lincoln County Health Department to set up a meeting to discuss the COVID situation, protocols and responsibilities of each entity in an open session, special board meeting.
Thank you, Tammy. See, no additional hands for questions at this time. We will call that voting. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Say nay. If you have any abstentions. Motion carries unanimously on voice vote. Next thing on our agenda this evening, uh, is the superintendent review process and scheduling. One of the clarifying points as far as scheduling meetings and processes, including those that will be held in in closed session in review of our superintendent. We, we need to talk about not only a timeline of this, but the modification and clarification of that modification. So everyone is aware in the past, we had utilized a system called DAPES. District Administration Performance Evaluation System or software, uh, which, to say the least, was cumbersome for board members and was inconsistent. While there was some quality information provided and archived by the superintendent, that was difficult to work with from a board perspective of ongoing training and utilization. Um, the last I remember, um, what was appreciated in that process was the fact of over that school year, there was three different times where we met with a formative type discussion or assessment, followed by at the end, a summation or a summative report of that. Uh, and then reflection, of course, uh, on that year in review for the superintendent. Some of the things there, uh, while I realize we had an endemic and we have met in the past and instructed in closed session. Uh, Dr. Sample on, uh, goals and, and things with related to the pillars of our district and our mission and vision. What we do need to do is get back on schedule. Um, when we did talk this last summer, we did without having DAPES being utilized, that we needed to come up with something, uh, different. Yet still encompass those timelines as well as information that can be shared from all of us as board members collectively to continue to guide the district superintendent. What we had seen in the past when we used that, uh, evaluation tool was beginning of the year, somewhere toward the middle of the year and into second semester was when we did the formatives and toward the end of the school year, we did the summative. I would like to hear from the board members, not only on timelines, and one of the things that did not align with it in my mind was the contract scheduling. However, it, it did go from when we had the training at that time from DAPES. So e- either way, we need to set an expectation of when we will meet next, what the data we want to provide from each of us for that session. And then also if the expectation is for those, if we continue on the formative review and going to a summative at the end, what those expectations are timeline for the superintendent to bring to those meetings as well, as we had talked before. Uh, using words like evidence or artifact or examples, uh, based on those achievements. At this point, I would ask any board members' input to start with on the frequency and when the next one should be. And then any input that we also have and can discuss on what each board member should bring to the table as well as superintendent's. So let, let's start with frequency. Is everyone?
Can I just ask one question? Are we sticking with the DAPES thing or can we change to some other program?
DAPES did not get renewed.
It did not? Okay, okay.
So there, we had determined.
I think I ignored this.
Yeah, we had determined some time ago that, I'd have to check the minutes, although that, it, it was not being utilized to its full extent and we wouldn't need an additional change.
That's like, but we've been talking about so much stuff the last few months.
That's, that's a fair question. I guess we do not have, uh, subscriptions at this time.
Okay, so I guess maybe we should probably look into something different first before we figure out the frequency of doing them? I mean, what, what are we, I mean, potentially looking at using? That would be my question.
Historically, I think when we first started on the board, I can speak to when I first started on the board, there was what, what appeared to be a form that either the past president or each member of the board came up with a question that was important to them based on the, the current environment of the district and their equivalent of the four pillars at that time, mission and vision. Everyone, although I think there was more than nine questions, it may have been ten or twelve. And then, and everybody filled that out. Rank the performance numerically, one to 10, and then I'll bring that together. And then work on putting that data together one time a year, which a- as you said, not even during a pandemic year, but to remember what somebody did months and months ago without taking quality copious notes wasn't fair to anyone. So the process improvement was to follow that timeline. But to your point, I would, I would have to get data either from, uh, Wisconsin Association of School Boards, WASP, as we use that acronym. Uh, talk to CISA nine and, and ask what other superintendents are using for evaluation tools that may be own or supplied by these other organizations.
Or user friendly.
Yeah, and something that may be
Okay.
good for everybody to use. Any other clarifying questions this time? Mr. Smith, go ahead.
Um, I think we could probably use the same models of educator effectiveness that is used throughout the district for the superintendent, which from my understanding is he would set goals and pillars which are already in place. And I think we already discussed that we want it, um, basically in the same manner it's driven by the employee to accumulate artifacts and then provide those to the board like on an annual basis. Which I think is already, you know, beacon of the blitz. So like we, we already have the framework and the mechanisms. It's just a matter of receiving that information from the superintendent, from my understanding. And I, my suggestion is, is we don't do it at nine thirty at night. Like, that is historically, that is absolutely horrible. So like, I think superintendent evaluations deserves a five thirty PM start. It's the only topic refreshed and we have a discussion. It's twice a year. I mean, I don't know if I've been reviewing my career any more often than that. And, and it's really led and driven by the superintendent, just like most reviews are led and driven by staff and cooperation with the manager. But, and those are my two pieces of feedback.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Looking around the table, I see Kendra stand up. Go ahead, Kendra.
I agree with John. I also think twice a year is probably, I don't know how often, um, staff is an annual evaluation of staff? So I mean, at least something, but I don't know if he'd like to make your check in with us and again, I think from a, we don't see her day to day. They just see what she presented to us. I think Kevin makes to see it maybe a little bit more hands on than the rest of the board members. So even if I annual, um, to just touch point, I think that'd be my suggestion.
Uh, with educator effectiveness, which was the DAPES, but I understand the user unfriendliness of, of DAPES. The other part of educator effectiveness is COEPS and the Central Office Performance Evaluation System. And then, uh, what we use with, with our, our teachers as well, and it's geared towards speech language, psychologists, specialists, uh, those things. So, um, it would be a goal setting conference essentially to get it started and then a mid-year review and then an end of the year review. So whichever way you want to slide that on the calendar. Uh, I know Eddie knows, I think, uh, administrators, if there's a non-renewal question, it has to be done by February and I believe it's the end of April, begin of May or the future. So you may want to slide it that way to coincide with contracts and, um, all for five thirty in the evening.
There, there.
Go ahead.
There's nothing that prevents us from going into closed session at five thirty and reopening at six thirty for a regular meeting, isn't there?
That's correct.
I mean, we could twice a year go into closed session and to begin the meeting and then publicly announce that the public session begins at six thirty. Hopefully we'll curtail the agenda to accommodate that. But, you know, that way we can stick to doing it during regular board agenda, this is not coming for special, we just take care of it first thing.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Linda, go ahead.
Yeah, so that sounds like a pretty good idea. Um, cause like I even almost gave a clock at night. Because like I even almost eight o'clock at night, sometimes your brain just wants to shut off and relax. And so well, which sometimes doesn't even happen either way, but it's always good to probably start fresh when we're going to be discussing that as well. And whether we do it at the beginning of a regular board meeting or if we just have a special meeting, because sometimes depending on the agenda items, meetings can go quite lengthy. But yeah, and twice a year would, I think twice a year would be good because that's kind of like but I'm myself, I get mine where I get to talk to my employer and then they give me feedback. But then at the end of the year, they go ahead and, you know, give you your performance review. But you know, public sector versus private sector is a little different. But yeah, I think what John's saying is a good idea.
Thank you, Lynda. Chad?
I think Dr. Sample, you said you wanted our use of the teacher this three times a year? Beginning, middle and end?
It's the same evaluation, it's an annual evaluation, but they need their evaluator to establish what their goals are and the expectations at the beginning of the year. Then there's a mid-year review to let it know how well they're doing towards those goals. And then there's the end of the year. So yeah, but the meetings take place throughout the year. There's observations, there's rapid cycle feedback numbers, which is new this year. Those types of things. And then teachers and anybody being evaluated that's in educator effectiveness submits artifacts and fills in the documentation box. So it gives the evaluator an idea of exactly what's going on. They'll even survey students or other teachers, whatever that survey may be to show good. So there's multiple meetings throughout the year, but it's essentially if I had to boil it down, it's making sure everybody's on the same page initially to be whole set and then mid-year and then end of the year.
I have that feeling. That gives you the beginning of what we expect and the only other thing I got both the I'm not, don't take this the wrong way, but just say if you do it at the beginning of the meeting, we go into closed session. I'm asking you and say you had a bad evaluation. Do you really want to sit through two hours of meeting? I just, you know what I'm saying? I know I wouldn't want it. I wouldn't want to go to a meeting and have to sit after, you know, look at this guy, that guy. I'm just, I don't know if that should be a own, it's own meeting. That way he doesn't have to sit two, two hours after if he can go home and you know, you know where I'm getting at though?
I do. I'm confident and I felt very uncomfortable before and I managed. So
That's fine. I'm just giving you the opportunity to say, hey, I would rather have one myself or?
Hopefully it's not a heads up, but it's just a whatever. Thank you, Chad. Ron, go ahead.
I'm just, Chad was saying, this is going to be twice a year. You could have a special meeting for twice a year. Wouldn't be that many. And then it would be that topic, you're done.
Thank you, Ron. Anybody else with discussion or clarification on that? So gathering all the thoughts.
Did you make the motion or anything or is there any further information to cut? I guess what, I guess what are what are you expecting from the rest of us members tonight for this?
So I wanted to recap that and verify that if I understood right, we know we had carryover goals and expectations from the past. Do we need to set any sort of meeting or make that part of a closed session next meeting just to reaffirm that goals and directions for the superintendent for the district next month? Or are we operating off of last year's expectations so Dr. Sample, our superintendent, knows what to be archived and provided? And then after that, we can rely back on information, as you said, from the contract cycle and we can get back into, should we be doing this in which months? And we can talk about that. I want to clarify our next step. So we're leaving here tonight and meeting everyone's expectations by meeting accordingly.
I guess our next step is to find a tool that we can get all utilized and then go from there.
What was the tool we used to use? That or a cell? That's where we're going to go. Okay. So you're saying the form that we used to have.
The ones you're testing out.
Yeah, that was all right.
Oh, no.
It worked. It worked.
I guess to a certain extent it worked, but
At least everybody did it.
Yeah. That's true. Everybody did do it. That's true because, you know, it did force us to write our stuff down.
It worked just fine. I would state my, I didn't mean to cut you off, but I would agree that based on being on paper versus technology participation was higher. I would not say the quality of the review and it being tied to district mission, vision and our pillars was modernized in today's environment in our district or the board's intentions. If you want to review that as a board, we could each take a question or I could work with whomever to get that handled. But I for one would not be interested in bringing the old form back. The format would be fine. Just not the form on itself. That's all right. Okay. Mr. Smith, go ahead. Now?
And I think just generally speaking, when you have any type of review, you're talking about whether the person is proficient, exemplary, needs a professional performance improvement plan or recommendation for termination. And it's only those four things, you know? And so after the end of the discussion, it's not termination, it's not performance improvement plan. You can split hairs between proficient and exemplary. You know, I guess I kind of look at it that way, that if a person's proficiently doing their job, done deal. If they're not, well, then you have performance improvement plan. If you're not going to do that, then we're back to proficient. And I think we get caught up in the whole, what's the ranking? No, it's just, you know, are you proficient in doing what we ask? The answer is yes. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Any other clarifying comments? When would we like the data gathered and presented? And what means? Do you want to stun for next meeting and then reviewed? What is the board's wishes?
What about December? December for like the first one?
Is everyone all right with December? We'll get that as a product in the meantime. So that gives our superintendent time to collect that data and I will make sure that that resources put together if it was the sheet of updated questions or if we have a new tool that we can review and put together to utilize for this process. Thank you. Next on our agenda, unless anyone else has anything else to add to that, I think we can move on. I'm going to go to the consent agenda and I will start by asking if anyone would like anything pulled from the consent agenda. I see a couple hands. Kendra?
I would like to pull the policy three one one two and four one one two.
Anyone have any difference that they would like pulled from the consent agenda? Ron?
I agree with pulling those two policies. They would suggest they go back to committees.
We could talk about that at the point of that. Thank you. With that request, Tammy, I believe we can go through that topic first. Is that correct? Kendra, if you had asked for that to be pulled, is there would you like the floor first to address your recommendation and why you're looking for that to be pulled and what action you would prefer to be taking next?
Yes, before I make the recommendation, I'd like to understand a little bit of the policy meeting that took place and the history behind this policy and why it was recommended and it was wait for the first reading or just a second.
I don't know the history behind the policy. I know it's a policy that you had and many districts implement. It comes down to chain of command. It also comes down to the savings of money. If if the board or many board members, this is small town, large city, become aware of a situation that they may have to rule on later, they're going to recuse themselves. And so from that perspective, it's a cost efficient means of operating. Chain of command is nothing unusual at all. We have that whether it be from custodial maintenance with our athletic coaches, those types of things. A parent's not going to go to the superintendent, their child's not getting enough playing time. There's a chain of command that we function within in there. That does not mean that board members are off limits and you're supposed to ignore them. It also doesn't mean that you can't go home and bet. I don't, I can't. My wife is a horrible liar and she's a teacher. So I get to sleep with that or not every night. It's, but there is the chain of command provides some order and protects both parties from getting themselves in a position to where it might go to a hearing or litigation and then somebody's going to have to recuse themselves. Too many people find out, rumors start spreading. We all know how social media works. Those are just some of the things. I am very careful when I share information with the board and that is my chain of command. That I am not tainting the board in any way. There are some things that I have to wait until they are resolved and that there is no chance that it's going to come before the board before I can let you know what's happening. And those are just data to the operations. I know Eddie sent out an email too, talking and clarifying that policy to the district and the DPA. So Eddie, if you can touch on that just a little bit as well.
Yes, a couple of things. I think that, you know, we do our, our policy reviews at our committee meetings. And, you know, we're asked every time we go through those, HR finance is caught up right now. So we haven't done one recently, but I believe we're scheduled to start back up again in January and start going for those policies from the last five years. But I'm asked, we discuss and those types of things come up during the course of the day to day work that I do. You know, what changes would you make to policy to help out or make things better for the board or for staff or whatever? And in the last two and a half years that I've been here, there have been a number of different times where it would have been helpful to have that policy. Usually if somebody ends up, you know, in my office or if I'm being a supervisor and somebody about an issue that happened, regardless of what the issue, the first question that everybody always says is, well, where does it say that? So this is that opportunity for me to have something that says, well, here's actually where it says that. And, you know, we can have a reference point. And I think that's valuable and helpful for communication about what is expected, what's not expected. So that's a little bit of the background. And like I said, I've tried to see that policy a couple of times in the last two and a half years. And finally, we were in a policy, I knew there was a policy meeting coming up. I called the rap and said, hey, do you have a policy for this? And they said, yeah, we do. So it's not a policy that like Eddie made, so to speak. It's one that they have in stock that they, you know, give to districts frequently. There have also been numerous times, I know we've had discussion, and Ria has brought up very validly, you know, board members being able to make unbiased decisions like John's talking about. I came from a district that ended up buying out a superintendent for $375,000. It's not an effective use of tax money. It doesn't build culture. It doesn't help students. The list goes on. And that's one district. When we were working with the attorney at the time, we were going through that process. There were numerous other districts and it's not cheap for anybody. Legal costs included, which I believe there's some discussion of that in the next HR finance. So again, from a risk standpoint, trying to help manage those costs, manage those risks. I think it's a good policy to do. And listening to the comments that were made tonight, I feel pretty confident to say that there's definitely no violation of like free speech. You have incredibly competent and highly paid for that matter. We have adopted, you know, policies and we pay a hefty sum for that. And they write good policies for districts across the country. Policies that have intertwined themselves with federal law, various state laws, local laws. And so I'm not worried about any violations there. The area where it needs to be carefully handled is how it's handled and interpreted at the local level. The email I sent out is not intended to say that nobody can, you know, contact their board member or their elected official or someone that they voted for. That is not the intention of it at all. It's to help ensure that you guys, the board, are able to make those challenging decisions that you're asked to make with regards to hiring, firing and everything in between. And it's very difficult to do that. So but you have people who will come to you and tell you about their version of the inside scoop. And again, not saying that whoever comes to you is always wrong. I'm just telling you guys that, as you know, there's always two sides to every story. Merrill has been, has been in the past along with other districts and board members prior to you and after you will always be able to make those tough decisions. I think this is one of those policies that will help everybody kind of operate with a safe fences and know what's expected. I think that another piece to the puzzle is as a safety net, you know, and I completely understand. I was a teacher before. I totally get it. If I was a teacher and someone were to preface me and say, no, you shouldn't have done that. We have a grievance policy. I could file that grievance. I could bring it to the board. And at that time, you guys would get to make the decision. So let's say that I go and write up an employee who did something that we view as a violation of that policy. Do you guys still have the ultimate say to say, hey, you shouldn't written that person up or you shouldn't have, you know, this, that or the other, because you still get to be the jury essentially on that as long as you're on my ass. So I think there's still some safety nets in place where if someone is being handled inappropriately or incorrectly via the policy, you still have the final say. So over that, there's a little bit of background. Is there anything I missed in there or?
Well, I'm just curious. So there is the policy eleven twenty, which already outlines, if I'm correct, the organizational chart and kind of chain of command if we're all accustomed to any type of environment. I don't think it's limited to schools. I think if any business has a chain of command. The only difference that I've seen, and please help explain if I'm missing something, is that there's disciplines available in the policy that's being presented. Is that correct?
Yes. And so one of the other things about the eleven hundred series policies is that, I believe those are board level policies. And, you know, when I've had some things, we have policies that are redundant and there are policies that are in the board section, the eleven hundreds. There are student section, five thousand series, eight thousand series, four thousand and three thousand that all very, you know, say a lot of the same thing. And in fact, if you look at some of the policies that were approved, there are some I believe there's some harassment policies and things like that, like sixteen ninety-two or something like that. It is very similar and parallels. It's quote unquote sister policies at other levels of the organization. So this one specifically is listed at the staff level in both professional and support staff. And that's part of why I think it's separate from the eleven hundred series.
And I do understand there's different policies. I'm just confused because it says it's from the administrative guideline manual. So I don't know that it's a board policy.
Administrative guidelines is, can be revised at any time. It's an administrative guideline. So you get the board policies, you get the board bylaws and you get the administrative guidelines. It requires board action to change or revise any policies or bylaws.
So because it's in the administrative guideline manual, it does not apply to, like it's not in a teacher's handbook or the staff handbook?
I'm sorry, which one?
So the eleven twelve, the eleven twenty? When I look it up, it says it's in the administrative guideline manual. So is that different from the board?
It is, like John said. And those are things that administratively got put in place at one point and I don't believe required approval. This, yeah, that's essentially the pathway there. It's just very different. But the administrative guidelines are intended to support policies that are in place and to further communicate how we're going to do what the board wishes through the policies they've elected to take.
Thank you, Kendra. Redd, followed by Chad.
Just as a reference, your administrative guideline eleven twenty has a very outdated organizational chart. chart. So I recommend a change on that.
Did Tammy, we saw?
Yeah, I'm looking at it on the website. You heard one of them, at least one I can read.
That's the one I see. Oh, I see. The link itself.
Your hyperlink.
The hyperlink is not matching what's the law.
Okay. Yep. Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Brett. Go ahead, Chad.
Just kind of, yeah, moving to the board, yeah, on some of this stuff. Is it normal? Does it get the first reading?
That is a committee choice, and we've done it because the, it does essentially get two reads because that committee was, I forget, was that the committee? A very group of people. But it gets a read that night, it gets a read tonight, and the option to pull it out officially tonight. So it's not like it goes straight to action. It can be stopped, re-discussed, or whatever.
Yes, Mr. Smith, if you would respond to that update.
Well, not the chair policy, but I've said on it for a while. We do somewhere between 20 to 40 policies in an hour and a half. Pretty intense reading, and we go through each one of them. And if we look at a policy and it seems like something that is, would be well-accepted without contestment, we'll adopt it as a second reading for the sake of efficiency. So I know when this one was adopted, it wasn't adopted, you know, like, it basically was explained that it was a, something that the administration sought to basically outline the proper procedures. Because if you don't have a policy that indicates what's right or wrong, you can't hold anyone accountable for doing the wrong. And if you look at the policy, and I did that night, and we're talking about all communications from staff members related to the performance of their job duties or the responsibilities of the board or its committees shall be submitted to the district administrator. I mean, as a board member, I don't want to hear about someone's job duties. You know, I don't want to hear about personnel issues. That's why we have an administrative team. And that the second part is really, it ties into the board policy that we have about our own board behavior and our own board conduct. And so that policy is a bylaw for the board. And it says that board member, board members are expected to refrain from engaging in communication on behalf of the board or behalf of the district unless authorized to do so by majority vote of the board. Any board member who chooses to engage in individual communication on management of the board or the district of business is expected to clearly identify whether the board member is communicating in the following capacity, on behalf of the board or as an individual board member. I mean, so we have our own rules of communication and engagement that we're expected to follow. And so this is like the other side of the coin. It basically says, you're not going to call and lobby your board member over a personnel issue. Personnel issues are addressed by managers in any organization. And the managers being administrators would have the basically first right of hearing those issues. If you disagree with the management, then we have a grievance process. If the grievance process is then initiated and you've already had a conversation, you would have to recuse yourself from any part of the grievance process. And so you're out. You're tainted. You've already heard one side of the story. You can't participate. And so it really protects the board and the employees' ability to initiate the grievance process. Because if the conversation's already been had, that particular board member's not going to be at the table when it comes to having a grievance. So, I mean, we read those policies in that manner under those contexts, and we just approved it as a second grievance for the board. And that's a duty thing.
Okay, thanks.
Beth?
Linda, go ahead. I guess I'm kind of going to flip over to here. I've already said that it's, I don't understand why they got put into the handbook before they were even approved by the board.
Now, there's other policies in there tonight. Like normally when we've done a policy update, our historical practice has been to have a lot of links in the handbook. So we try to get them done all at once. Otherwise, the changes I gotta have have to wait all over a month. And so.
Well, I guess if you have, I mean, before, I mean, that's not approved by the board. I mean, and it takes you a month to have to put it up in the book. That would be proper, correct? I guess to me. I mean, you wouldn't want to put something in the handbook if it hasn't been approved by your employer.
Yeah, no, if you guys went to approve it tonight and went out and this didn't go through, I was gonna come down here and say, maybe we got a little bit of an issue. We can go back and deal with that, but.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Linda. Follow up, Kendra.
I just have two comments. So the handbook had, it said if there was no change, if there was change to the handbook, it'd be highlighted in green. And you just said a bunch of policies were updated. And I think I only saw, someone please correct me again if I'm wrong, three areas that had written highlights. So were only three updated. Are all of these policies that were, that are at consent, which I'm going to be highlighting?
Not all the policies are in the handbook.
Okay.
The ones that I highlighted that are in green are ones that are just in the handbook. Not yet, but all of them going there.
Okay. And then my other comment is, and I hate to bring up comments again, but we talk about, to me, this place was disciplinary action potentially on somebody that reaches up to the board. We do a survey at the end of the year that only administration sees the comments. So how do we know the temperature of the culture if we're not able to, I don't, I agree, John, I obviously want to hear, you know, if someone's having personal issues, the first response is to go to your administrator. But if there are issues, what's their outlet? Who can they go to? That's an unbiased source. I'm just confused with that, if they're afraid that they're going to get disciplined.
What level are you talking around there? So there's.
So there's a survey that they can complete, people can complete at the end of the year, which I think there's valid information that the administration can see based upon the comments that are in there and can make improvements or have conversations. And if that is a staff member's thought as their outlet to reach out to the board if there's something that they are not happy with, or there's a process that's happening that they're not happy with. If that's what they felt was going to be presented to the board, which it's not, we've had a conversation about the comments, it's not coming to the board. But now we're also saying in a policy that if you do come to the board in certain, particularly for certain particular items, you can be disciplined. And I understand that you're not saying that they can't talk to us about other items, but I feel like it really puts a line in the sand of us being able to even visit the schools and have a teacher comfortable with us walking in that room and being able to grow that relationship and keep the culture as what I feel like it is at BACS, which is a family.
Well, I visit the schools too, but I'm in the same position because I'm removed as well. Most likely, that doesn't mean that I don't communicate with teachers or support staff. But if there, and there is a line in the sand, and that line is not meant to make anybody feel uncomfortable as much as it's, if there's an immediate concern, it would go to their immediate supervisor. I mean, that's the person that's going to be most influential. If it doesn't get satisfaction there, it can go up the ladder, but it has to follow that chain of command. I don't know.
So is there a policy that doesn't mention discipline? Is there a policy for the teachers and staff that just has the chain of command and doesn't refer for disciplinary action? Is that something that we reach out to Niola about?
We could just simply take it out there. But I'd also say then, what's the point?
Well, that's kind of.
That's how we operate right now. So, yeah, if we want to, again.
Because the teachers understand, I mean, especially the teacher staff, everybody understands that there is a chain of command, is what I'm hearing. So when you say that, that's what I'm hearing.
Sure. And then there's also, I mean, we could take it out. And it does say in the handbook, and it's understood that any policy violation is subject to disciplinary action. So we could take it out. I would have no problem with that. It just, it's always nice to let people know, any policy is subject to disciplinary action. They broke the policy.
Yeah, that may not be a unique practice for any of the policies that are written, but I will say this too, like in the two and a half years that I've been with you guys, and I know you've, I had a number of HR folks, I don't believe we, we don't bring things to you that are, you know, really, I guess I'll say, gonna be a home run. You know, if somebody's not doing things that are in the interest of the board, in the interest of the students, or in the culture of the building, the board not gonna bring you something fluffy. And this will help us put you guys in a position to be able to enforce what you value, which partly I assume is the policies that you adopt. So, yeah, that's where it's coming from at the board. But I don't think their staff members will tell you that we've written tons of people up and brought up to the board. That just doesn't, we've not done that. We've been people who've got headers in their file, but again, you know, we've now gotten to a point, and I've said this before, the Merrill staff have been great, like in the district that I came from, with somewhere around 30% of the size in terms of students and staff. We have a great staff, you know, that's just not a common, not a common issue, but for that rare occasion where it happens, you want to be in a good position.
One clarification from Mr. Smith.
Yeah, I just wanted to reinforce that. The board's number one goal is to set policy. Second, thoroughly lean equal to approve and monitor budgets. That's it. That's our job description. And so every policy that's in print is subject to fully disciplinary action if it's not followed. So the sentence might be redundant, but if you remove it, it's still the same. The second part that I wanted to reinforce is that we hear policy violations at the board level, non-employment dissatisfaction. So you have dissatisfaction in your employment situation, that goes to your next chain of command. And you may or may not agree with the chain of command about employee dissatisfaction or employment satisfaction, but there really is no recourse for that. If policies are followed, there's no policy violation, the board doesn't get involved. And so if there was, well, at least hopefully we have a policy violation. And we found in the policy that some supervisor or some part of our procedures is violating the policy, then the district administrator would be notified immediately. And if the district administrator failed to recognize that as a violation of policy you distributed them, you would contact the corporate compliance officer on behalf of the board to alert the board that it's being disregarded. And that would go directly to the president. So I mean, I think it's just important to remember that we only listen to policy violations. That's the scope of our responsibility. We pay administrators to do the rest for us. And so this particular policy doesn't restrict anybody from doing what they were doing before, except for communicating performance relation, you know, information and communication relating to their jobs, job performances, something you would normally find sealed in a personnel record. Because we don't want to hear it, because we have to stay unbiased. In the event it actually escalates up to these other policies that says that they're going to grieve, then I want to hear it for the first time ever, than having heard it before. And so I think it's, it's not, to me, it's not an issue. It's how we always conduct a business. The difference of this is if someone decides to circumvent their supervisor or their principal, you call a board member and then tell the board member everything and everything about the ongoing inner workings of the operation relative to their job performance, that'd be a violation of policy. And the board would deserve the right to subject that person to disciplinary action. And I wouldn't see anything wrong with that either.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Linda, go ahead.
Yeah, so I guess when I was elected for this position, I took it for more than just being a policy watcher. I took it as being, listening to my community, helping with the budget, helping make sure the students are succeeding with where they needed to go in their educational ventures, helping the staff, you know, making, you know, trying to work with everybody, you know, not just policies. You know, so if somebody does have a concern, whether it be, you know, a parent, a student, a teacher, just whoever it may be, that's what I was elected for, was to listen to what they have to say. And if I feel that it's on that line, I'll say, well, okay, please see, you know, talk to your supervisor, which is your principal, your administrator. You know, if you're not getting it done there, you know, go to Mr. Stambles, or, you know, please go to Kevin. But I'm gonna be there to listen. Because it's not always just about, like, performance reviews or evaluations. It's about everything. It's about everything that's going on in the building or something else besides that. You know, and I knew that coming into this when I got elected and what that meant. And it meant, I'm here for the people. I don't work for the administration. I don't work for the superintendent. I work for my community. And that means teacher, staff members, students, everybody involved. So, I mean, to, and they already know, they have gone through the chain of command, they already know. But they still want to be per. And that's kind of what, and I guess this is the first I'm hearing about a corporate compliance person. But I want to be able to be out in public. And if somebody wants to say, or start talking to me, I'm gonna talk. But that not, and it could be a business or it could just be a friendly conversation. But I'm an elected official. I work for the whole community, not just for policies. So that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Mr. Smith.
Just a point of clarification. Is there any topic that's off limits during your conversations with the community?
If they come to me with something about hate or something they're being, getting accused of, I send them a different direction.
I would say.
Or I also, I'll let you talk, so let me finish. Thank you. Or I will just say, you know, I'll go on my thoughts or say, you know, this is where you should go with these questions. Only one board member. And that's how I act as one board member. I never ever once say in the community, I'm out here as nine board members. That would not, I can't go in there with that. I'm one person. So, you know, I do direct them to where they need to go. Or I will ask for, you know, I'll say, and I think I've come to John with it. Sometimes I'll say, well, you know, so-and-so came to me with this problem, can you assist? You know, so it's nothing where, yeah, I'm gonna run and fix your problem. It's just, I'm there to listen. That's what I'm elected for.
Thanks for clarifying. Two points I would like to add to everyone's comments is we have had community conversation. We have had different planning meetings. We have talked above. And I take them seriously, culture, climate. We talked about hiring and retaining quality staff. I understand why Niola has this policy. I don't know that that's the spirit that everyone's reading that as. I see the safeguard. I see both sides to this. And I certainly respect the opinions of those in public comments and all my fellow board members. I do not understand fully how it could be worded any differently. I certainly know that the spirit that I've heard from the board in the past, that we're not trying to come up with a plan or a tool for administration at any level, if it's a superintendent, the director of business operations, or any building principal, to start us down the line of having a whole bunch of grievance processes kicking off. And I think we've been clear on that, just as we have, as trying to give our students as many chances as possible before having an expulsion hearing. Certainly, I think there's a reaction where this came through what appears to be our normal process of policy committee, and there was an understanding. I would look at this time, unless someone else said, the board member had additional discussion or a recommendation. Now that we pulled this and had this discussion, what the proposed motion or action would be based on this data. Is anyone willing to provide that guidance in a form of motion? what the proposed motion or action would be based on this data, is anyone willing to provide that guidance in a form of motion?
I just want to express my feelings. In some ways, I feel like Linda, if somebody wants to talk to me, you know, and I'm elected official, I like to be able to talk to them. If it's something that gets down into policies and a problem, you know, then I should not discuss it, I'm not the full board speaking, I'm not. But I like to, you know, from what I'm hearing from the public, they're afraid to even talk to us, that, you know, maybe somebody wants to come up and say, you know, to me and say, you know, have you guys ever considered putting more tennis courts in Merrill? I'd like to see more tennis courts. I'd like to be able to talk to them, they should be able to come and talk to me and say something like that. How can we word it in this policy that people can talk to us? And it's up to our, it's up to us to not talk about, you know, board policies, board decisions, board school issues, you know, personnel issues, stuff like that, but common, everyday questions, I'd like to be able to talk to the public. So how can we word this policy that we could do this? Does anybody understand what I'm trying to say?
I think that was like the interpretation or how for me at least is that, both of the things that you and Linda are asking to be able to talk to people about, they're okay with that policy, no problem whatsoever.
That's okay?
Yeah, so those type of people on tennis courts, they can even come to you and say, hey, the, yeah, right now the culture at X, Y, Z buildings is tough right now. There's some challenges going on. That's a different conversation than saying, principal at X, Y, Z is incompetent and should be let go. Those are two different conversations, and what I'm advocating for through the policy is that the second conversation shouldn't be happening. But by all means, you guys are elected by plenty of people who work here and live in this community, and they should, it's not a problem for them to talk to you. It's healthy and that's not what the purpose of the policy is.
So the way the policy is written, the people could feel comfortable coming to us with something like I asked, and we could talk to them. It's up to me as a board member to say, no, I'm not allowed to talk about this issue if they, okay, then I don't have a problem if that's, but I hope that's communicated to the employees that, you know, they can't come, they shouldn't expect us to answer a question that's, you know, a personnel issue between them and somebody else. But they won't be retaliated against if they come and talk to us and let us decide whether they, we can talk or not. You know, I mean, they are, right now it sounds like they're afraid to even say I'm old to us. You know, it's what I'm getting, and somehow that policy needs to...
I don't know what the proper words are. Did you tell them that I shared the email that I sent to staff with the board?
I did, I just, I spoke to it just a little bit tonight, I did not, I did not share the email. It does reference those, now to your point too, if there's fear, then you should be afraid as well, because there's, it references, and I'm saying that facetiously, if board member behavior and code of conduct also dictates what conversations the board member can have with staff and the public and those types of things too. But tennis courts and any of those things are fine. It's just when it gets to the point of you're gonna have to recuse yourself because you have too much information about something that's gonna, you're gonna have to eventually move on.
Okay, is all the, are the employees and the public gonna be able to realize this, the way the policy is written?
Yeah, I can, I can share the email that Eddie shared, we can restate another email, so you can. Again, principals cover that their meetings as well, I can go to those meetings if it's needed. I think it was more of a concern than some of the elementary possibly, so if needed, I can go all to those buildings and field questions or whatever, it's, you know.
We still have a handful of board members hands up. Clarification, Dr. Sample, can you share the date and time and who all received that email? Because I know it wasn't board members, we just verified that, that went to all other district staff and what day and time?
Tuesday evening, October 26th, at 7:35 PM, it went to district staff, the MAPS staff, as well as BBA, which is part of MAPS.
Okay. So since then, and I will ask Ron next, followed by Maria, John, I think Chad had his hand up as well. We had some public comment, and it is just that it is that information. I believe both people with public comment would have then had opportunity to receive that email and digest that before feeling the need to speak tonight, so there is a communication gap if we like to believe that or not, or an interpretation of the communication. And I'll leave it at that, we have to figure out, I think it's clear as to the spirit of what all the board members are looking for. And when we're not here to put fear in all the staff, it is a war. But we need some clarification, I will turn it over to Ron with a question or discussion point.
If you read item C, a social interaction, will staff and board members seek a keen interest in the school and in education generally? And is it to be expected that when they meet at social affairs or other functions, they will informally discuss such matters as educational trends, issues, you know, installation, and general activities of the district? However, since board members have no special authority, except when they are convened in a legal meeting of the board or vested as special authority by board acting. Discussion between staff and board members related to the performance of job duties, the responsibilities, and the appropriate obligations of the chain of command. That's item C in both policies. So it says you can talk about tennis courts, you could talk about whatever, you just can't get into, well, you know, I don't like that principal, I make you out of fire. But, you know, I think people are missing that bottom part of the policy.
Anything else? Thank you, Ron. Maria's hand up for the Johns.
Just a couple of thoughts. You've got a perception problem here with your voice. This is framed to them, from what I've heard tonight, to look like there's going to be disciplinary action if they come to a board member with an issue. Now, if they come to a board member with an issue, it is upon, it is upon Linda, it is upon John, it is upon everybody here to say, I can't talk to you about that. That's my responsibility as a board member. I'm not going to listen to somebody come and say, Eddie did this, Shannon did this. It's, I have to back out of that conversation because I'm tainted at that moment, that's on me. I don't like the idea tonight that there's a perception problem with MAPS employees, that there's some disciplinary action that's going to happen, and there's some backdoor way that the administration is gonna get at them for coming to a board member. It's a perception problem. I don't think that's the intention, I certainly hope that that's not the intention, but I think we have to step back away from this because it's an issue tonight, and I think we need to talk about it some more and try and reframe how we're going to do this. I'd like to see the email that was sent to staff, because I, in my mind, I'm like, okay, why is this email sent to staff and this is not even approved policy? What did you say? I mean, what did we say as an administration? We're gonna do this? We don't know we're gonna do this because it wasn't before the board first. Now, I respect the role of the policy committee and the folks that reviewed it, but clearly it's an issue right now, and I don't want it to be a perception problem going forward, so I just think it's better for us to talk about it a little bit more and not really finalize anything tonight because it's a perception problem, and I don't want it to be. That's my thoughts.
Thank you, Maria. I had Mr. Smith next.
Yeah, the intentions was not this, in fact, I was surprised when I came in and I was hearing public comment on it because I had no idea. The, I don't think that you get kicked to committee, it stays here until it's resolved. I would not, I would never discuss it in a committee at this point, because it's not a board issue, it's not a committee issue. If you look at the sentence, you know, Ron read the last paragraph, you know, the first paragraph said, "All communication from staff members relating to the performance of their job duties or responsibilities to the board or its committees shall be submitted through the district administrator. This procedure is not intended to deny any staff member the right to raise matters of concern regarding district operations to the board through the established procedures when no resolution is reached by the administration." And I don't find that to be a right or unreasonable. And then it says, "All official communications, policies, and directives of the board of staff interest and concerns to the staff shall be communicated through the district administrator, who shall keep the staff members informed of the board's problems, concerns, or actions." Basically meaning, I don't send emails to the teachers. I don't think that's irrational, and we already heard from Ron in the last section that that's not irrational. So I mean, I'm just throwing it out there that three paragraphs in this policy are not irrational. You can interpret it rationally, or you can take some point of it and not feel it's right, but in my opinion, it's just a reflection of what is already the expectation, but the administration is asking that we place into policy because you can't force an expectation that's not policy.
Thank you, John. Chad, was your hand up, otherwise I'm gonna turn the link to, go ahead, Chad.
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to motion that policy 3112, policy 4412 be returned to committee for further review.
You mean 4112, right?
Correct.
I'm sorry, 4112.
I'll second that.
Motion by Chad, a second by Linda. I guess I'll open it to questions or discussion, one of the things that I heard fellow board members say moments ago was, now that this has been a discussion of the entire board, what would the goal of kicking you back to a committee and then coming back, should there be? Would it be proper to have that on a full board agenda? Are you looking for specific things from a committee? I understand you're not, part of your intentions is to have this reported or reviewed or whatever that may be.
I might amend it to be dropped. I mean, that's what I, I don't even want to, truthfully, I don't even want to be considered. But I thought properly was to send back to committee.
You can amend or roll through that, or ask you questions to clarify what you had, and I was going to continue to ask your intentions and have any other questions or discussions for your motion, so it's clarified so people can vote properly.
Yeah, I guess maybe I was under an impression because if it was a policy, I'd have to go back to committee two as well, from what you're thinking, but if it's what you're saying, then if we want it removed completely, we can do that as well. Is that correct?
The motion that is going on with the majority of the board, you can ask for it to be pulled, you can ask for it to be readdressed by the whole board, you can ask for it to go back to committee. I had just heard some dialogue moments ago that suggested since we were already having input from the majority of the nine of us, was there reason or what was the direction to have it go back to the committee and not have this discussion at the next board meeting? So I wanted to clarify that with that motion, what is the goal?
The goal for me, the motion, would be to be removed. I don't know why I'm removing, it's not in the policy book yet, that's why I thought I could go back to committee.
Okay, so I think, Chad, I think what you made, you want, I don't know, I'm not sure what your words are in your mouth, but maybe you would like to resend your motion that you currently have on the table, and then make a different motion stating to remove policy...
To policy?
Remove the policies 3112 and 4112 from the handbook and the policies completely. I don't know if that's worded properly or not, but I'm getting the gist of kind of that's what you're kind of getting there, getting at.
Since they're not there, would we not to adopt, I believe would be, some of the terms, to utilize versus if they were already in there, you'd be removing it.
Yeah.
I would, can I drop my motion then?
You can resend the motion, we would allow that.
And then I'll reset my second motion, my...
My second motion. And then your new motion would be...
I'd make a motion not to adopt policy 3112, policy 4112.
As title of board staff communications.
And I'll second that motion.
We have a motion by Chad, a second by Linda to not adopt policy 3112, 4112 in the discussion. Are questions on that motion? Hearing them, we will call that votes. Tammy, could I have a roll call vote on this, please? Yep, just gather yourself there.
I guess not all of us make voting quite a bit, and some of us still new board members, so it kind of takes a bit to get each other how everything works.
Not a problem.
Okay, that's Asha.
Did you hear what the motion is?
Yeah, I heard the motion.
So we're doing a roll call vote on a motion to not adopt the new policy 3112, 4112 would be called out for your order this time. Aye.
Chad, three, three.
Aye.
Ron, liberty.
Aye.
Kendra, absence.
Aye.
John Smith.
Aye.
Maria, both be.
Aye.
Brad Baller.
Aye.
Flitton, England.
Aye.
Kevin Blake.
Aye.
Motion to not adopt policy 3112, 4112 is approved or passed on the page to one vote. At that point, I would go back to consent agenda with that information removed. Do we have a motion for consent agenda? Maria?
Wanting to approve consent agenda, item eight, reading, which includes events of the September 15th, 2021, September 28th, 2021, meetings received this September 20th, 2021, annual meeting and budget hearing minutes. Second readings of bylaw 0100 definitions, bylaw 0143, authority of individual board members, bylaw 0144.3, time limit is interest, bylaw 0144.5, board member behavior and code of conduct, bylaw 0145, board member anti-harassment, bylaw 0167.3, public conduct and working. Bylaw 0171.1, precedent, policies 1130, 3230, 4230, ethics and conflict of interest. Policy 1210, ward district administrative relationship policy 2043, issues in the classroom, policy 20266. Non-discrimination on the basis of sex in education programs or activities. Policy 2431, interest select activities, policy 3120, employment of professional staff. Policy 3215, 4215, 5512, 7434, use of tobacco and nicotine. Policies 3216, 4216, staff dressing rooming. Policy 4120, employment of support staff. Policy 5112, interest age. Policy 5500.01, conduct in virtual classroom. support staff, policy 5112, interest age, policy 5500.01, conduct in virtual classroom, policy 5520, disorderly conduct, policy 6152.01, waiver of school fees or fines, policy 6152, student fees, fines and charges, policy 7440.01, video surveillance and electronic monitoring, policy 7415, property inventory, policy 8500, food services, policy 9270, home-based, prior to or tribal schooling, policy 9700, relations with non-school affiliated groups, policy 1422, non-discrimination and equal employment opportunity, policy 1422.02, non-discrimination based on genetic information of the employee, policy 1623, section 504, ADA prohibition against disability discrimination in employment, policy 1662, employee anti-harassment policies, 3122, 4122, non-discrimination and equal employment opportunity policies, 3122.02, 4122.02, non-discrimination based on genetic information of the employee, policies 3123, 4123, section 504, ADA prohibition against disability discrimination, policies 3362, 4362, 5517, employee anti-harassment, policy 2260, non-discrimination and access to equal education opportunity, policy 2260.01, section 504, ADA prohibition against discrimination based on disability, and policy 9130, public requests, suggestions, or complaints, deletion of bylaw 0144.2, board member ethics, and bylaw 0174.2, school reform to court, receipt of the September 20, 2021 annual meeting and budget hearing minutes, claims, vouchers, and receipts totaling $4,404,924 in success, personnel report as presented, contingent upon the satisfaction of the appropriate liquidity as the efforts for resumations are applicable, and donations totaling $600,000.
Good motion by Maria. Thank you. Do we have a second? Second by Kendra. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Linda?
I'm going to stay from the September 20 minutes and the September 28 minutes.
All right, any other abstentions?
Yeah, I'd like to stay on the September 20.
Thank you. Motion carries as noted. At this time, we will go back to agenda item F, Board Business, topic is 2021, 2022, teacher and support staff handbook adjustments with the attached topic summary sheet and recommended. Motion, Mr. Schmidt?
Recommend a motion to approve the teacher and staff handbooks with the exclusion of policies 3112 and 4112, board staff communication.
For the 21, 22 school year?
Yeah, for the 20, 21, 22 school year.
Thank you, Mr. Schmidt. We have a second. Second by Brett. Do we have any discussion or questions on this motion or topic? Hearing done. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Do we have any abstentions? Motion carries on the voice board. Next item on our agenda is just the reminder of items for future meetings. The purpose of our, this is just to remind people that if they want something on a committee meeting, that you can talk to the chair or people putting together that meeting agenda at the time of the matter, so that data and topic summary sheets can be gathered to do that, unless there's not time allowing, and we need to put it on the regular board agenda that Dr. Sample and I would look at. At this time, does anyone besides our other discussion points from this evening, anyone have any items for future committee meetings or board meetings that they would like to mention tonight versus waiting through emails or other forms of communication? Hearing done. We don't have anything under the unfinished items for future meetings. Just a reminder, the radio schedule, the program, Blue J 730 radio is at 8:15 tomorrow morning. Dr. Sample, I will review tonight's Board of Education meeting, any upcoming events in the district, including future meetings, which will be Facilities Committee meeting on Wednesday, November 3rd at 3:30 PM in the boardroom, Finance HR Committee next meets on Wednesday, November 3rd at 4:30 in the boardroom, Head Start Policy meeting is Tuesday, November 9th at 5:30 PM at River School for Young Learners, the CTP, Critical Technology Pupil Services Committee, next meets on Wednesday, November 10th at 4:30 PM in the boardroom, Bridges Virtual Academy Governance Board, next meets on Thursday, November 11th at 12:45 PM virtually, and the next regular board meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, November 17th at 5:30 PM, and we will communicate if that will be here in the high school auditorium or in the boardroom. Next, we have a contemplated motion to adjourn into executive close session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes. Under section 1925, grant one, grant C, considering employment promotion, compensation of performance evaluation data of public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, grant E, deliberating or negotiation of the purchase of public properties, investing in public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a close session, grant F, considering financial, medical, social, or personal histories or disciplinary data of specific persons, preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems, or the investigation of charges against specific persons, except for grant B, applies which discussed in public, be likely to have substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data or involved in such problems or investigations. Grant G, conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become defiled, and 118.125, for the purposes of considering students' early college credit and start now applications that may involve discussions of confidential student records and to discuss other matters involving student records and personal histories that, if discussed in public, are likely to have substantial adverse effect on the reputation or reputations of the persons discussed. Purpose of the close session is to discuss and consider and possible action regarding a remote arrangement for employee for the consideration of possible action regarding applications for participation in early college credit and start college now programs to conduct, specify business, public business, which for competitive or bargaining reasons requires a close session due to consideration and discussion of sale of personal and real property associated with Maple Grove School, division of assets and liability between Marin area, County Public School District, and Atherton School District, which may occur as a result of granting petition for attachment of property in the town of Hamburg, and to take action regarding the same. Board may reconvene to open session and may take action upon the matters discussed during the close session portion of the meeting. Do we have that motion this evening? Motion by Linda. Do we have a second? Second by Nubs. Roll call on that, please, standing.
Nubs Ashback.
Aye.
Chad Feger.
Aye.
Ron Liberty.
Aye.
Kendra Ossman.
Aye.
Brian Neal.
Aye.
Maria Volpe.
Aye.
Brett Baller.
Aye.
Lydian Eakley.
Aye.
This time, we will take a recess as we transition to our area for close session. Thank you.